Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
All right, I'd like to call to order the special meeting of Brooklyn Select Board for Tuesday, December 10th, the time is 6:32. And the first and only item on the agenda is budget planning. So, people have in front of them new copies of the worksheet, and also, which is stapled, and then also an updated printout of the appropriations requests. We'll save the appropriations request for last. So, a couple of things to note quickly. I'd like to effectively start by going through the highway budget, since we haven't touched it yet. But I wanna, actually, let's go ahead and start with the highway budget, and then we'll go back, and I can give you some updates on some other things on the first, on the operating fund. So, the highways, the highway starts...
That's the updated one.
That's the new work, yeah, yeah. Because I filled in all the numbers that we put in for everything for the first fund. No, the highway, I started it yet, but I printed an entire new sheet, rather than having pieces into different copies. So, the highway starts on page four, the bottom part of page four. Current taxes is a number that gets figured out once we figure everything else out. We have typically budgeted $38,000 for revenue for state aid.
Correct, it's $9,000 off quarter.
Right, and we haven't had any indication that there's any reason to actually change. So, we'll keep that at $38,000. And this, these are again, these first few items.
Actually, I think $39,000 will be pretty close to the exact number, $39,000.
Okay, go with 39, okay. And these are anticipated revenues for it. Okay, so we'll put it in $39,000. The other thing I'll say is that I have, I am now, for the time being, the keeper of the master worksheet, rather than have Sarah have to update it with things we've got. So, as we're going through, I'm going to update the worksheet, in case we have any questions on where we stand with totals and stuff like that.
All right, I see the...
It's me having to open it.
Just a while, go, maybe what we've spent so far for the, up to the sixth period. Give us an idea of where we are.
Yeah, perfect, perfect. Okay, so 39, we'll go with $39,000 for state aid. Highway grants, we don't budget anything for those. So, I think we should keep that the way it is. Permit revenue, we did $100 bucks a couple of years ago. Last year, we dropped it down to 50.
Yeah, it's basically highway overweight permits and stuff like that, they're coming less and less.
Yeah, I mean, it seems sensible to me to keep it at 50, probably. It's just a guess of what we might have coming in. And then interest on investments. It's miniscule, we've used, last year, we lowered it to $200. I think we probably want to keep it there. If we end up making 200, we'll buy something fancy for the town with that additional money. So, we'll leave that at 100.
So, where you are, do you...
Hey, sorry guys. It's okay. Okay, so does that make sense for everybody? So, that basically is the only highway line items on page four.
So, you did $39,000?
$39,000 for state aid. Nothing for highway grants.
I do have a question about that. Can we put something for highway grants on you as the, yeah, just that a grant's coming in? Is that one that's like $95,000 for here?
Yes, yeah, because I think that that was probably... Probably for the box culvert, yeah. So, I guess, no, it's a good point. And should we be, would it be in our interest to be budgeting something for the salt sand shed?
Yeah, salt sand shed, that's...
Except...
$29,000 was up to the total price of, and I think the town was...
But do we have a five-year thing to do that with, so we don't know what is gonna be each year?
No, we're gonna start this spring.
Start or intention, yeah.
Yes, and it'll be finished by, I'm sure, by the fall.
In the beginning of the season.
We have to be finished for the season.
They'll be done by the fall?
Oh, yeah, we have to be.
Oh, is that right, to comply with the grants?
Well, no, not yet, but we need to have a salt shed for winter.
Yeah, you got a point there. That's okay.
So, yeah, it's a simple building.
You like to shovel, so...
Yeah, it's a simple building.
So, obviously, the counterpoint to that, though, is if we budget for that revenue, then we've also got to budget the expenditure for the cost of it, or else we're...
I thought we had that last year's budget, because we carried it over. We were gonna do it last year, but we didn't have...
So, that's what that $95,000 is?
No, that's an actual from...
Are you on, are we on the same page?
Page four.
Page four.
State aid, that's, all right, I was on, that's right, 39.
How else could we record that?
Say it again.
How else would we record that, other than, like, how do we? To not put it in the revenues and then in the expenditures? Like you were saying, if we didn't put it...
Well, no, I mean, the way, I mean, I think, well, at least, let's say, in the case of, I believe, in the case of 2019, the grant wasn't budgeted as far as a revenue or an expenditure, with the understanding that, basically, the revenue that came in from it was just gonna be paid back. As to defray the expenditure, and the remaining expenditure was going to be paid out of other existing budget items. We didn't set aside a specific budget amount for that project.
Okay, that $95,000, I believe, is for the culvert over here. That's the money we got back from the culvert over here. We had thought it was gonna be $100,000, and it came down a little less to $95,000. That's what that $95,000 is, and then maybe that's why it's in...
Well, and then, I mean, not that I want to dwell too much on this, but if you then go to page five, what you'll see is, for actuals for fiscal '19, there's a culvert expenditure separate line item, which was again, not budgeted, for $99,950.
And the reason probably it wasn't budgeted is because we were getting most of that money back from the state for $95,000.
Right, right. I mean, I think, I don't want to speak for Samara, but I think usually, Samara's thought was, rather than... Especially with some of these things that drift between fiscal years, where some of the expenditure is going to be during this current fiscal year, and the rest of it's gonna be next fiscal year, but all of the payback might be during next fiscal year. As far as reconciling budgeted expenditures and revenues, not that there's anything wrong with it, but it becomes a bit more complicated to explain, as opposed to just essentially, if, unless we feel we need to increase the budget in order to raise money to pay for our portion of it, which we don't normally feel we need to do, the assumption is, we're going to pay whatever the overage is out of excess that we have, rather than having to reconcile these two numbers across multiple years. Because we're basically gonna pay all of the money out that we get from them, for this single project. It's, I think there's an argument to do it either way, but that's, I think, the way...
That's the way it should be.
That's the way it's typically been done.
Well, this year, the only grant we'll have is for the salt shed. We have no paving grants, no other grants available, other than the Better Roads Grant, which is miniscule. We have one bill, I sent you the email today in regards to the inventory and stuff that they did, but that would be offset by the grant that we got. Because you said it would be less than what the grant that we got, so it won't cost us anything. I'm sorry, I get...
No, that's okay, that's fine. Is that, okay, let's move on to page five. I mean, we can...
The salt shed was in 80/20, is it?
Yes, right. Yeah, and I can't remember what the, I have to go look at my notes to see what the exact figure was. And we also included that there was a amount for the management fee, which was set in there. So, basically, all we're responsible for is that 20%.
Right, so the thing to keep in mind about that, and I mean, this sort of speaks to what I maybe think is Joseph's point this bit, as we're going through the highway, we need to keep in mind that though, we may not necessarily immediately see that we need all of a certain line item at a certain point, we need to keep in mind that we do have to make up the 20% of our match. Although, how much of it will happen during that fiscal year, and how much of it will have already happened before the end of this one is unclear.
That's the only thing I am kind of worried about, is it feels like needing to make up that 20% should be its own line item, rather than trying to divvy it up between...
The two years?
And then you're, and then you're not making an estimation on what a line item should actually be, just in and of itself, you're trying to fluff it up with some unknown percentage of that 20%?
That's a, that's a fair point, yeah. I mean, the problem is, though, is that what we don't know, and I don't know that we really have any way of knowing at the moment, is, from a timing standpoint...
When we need all of it, when it's coming in.
Right, because the reality is, the project might be done, if not, largely done, if not completely done, before this budget starts.
Yeah.
So...
Largely done, at least.
Hopefully, yeah.
I guess, my concern with this, too, I don't think it would be a big deal on the general fund, because that, that, that would just roll in, or, you know, get refunded. But since this doesn't get refunded, all of this, if I'm not mistaken, right, this, all of this just goes, just keeps rolling over.
Yeah, the highway is the only one that you can come in and...
Because of this reason.
Yeah, that's where my concern just comes up, where we shouldn't be kind of, you know, fluffing those things, thinking like, oh, we'll pay, you know, we got a new 10% of that next year, you know.
Which I don't necessarily, but how else would we do that?
Our revenue, our revenue overcomes that, because we get $40,000 just from the roads grant, roads money, so that's where some of those grant monies or matching funds come from. Plus, in some of these other line items, again, that money carries over, carries over. We didn't have a line grant for the grants per se, except for the paving.
So, you think it's more appropriate just to...
It's in the highway fund, right.
And then we'll just...
Because once you start delegating, or saying that this is only for that use, you get yourself into a jam if you need it for something else.
Didn't we vote on, like, three years ago, they were gonna set aside money for a new floor for the garage?
Yeah.
And they decided to do the salt shed instead, so they put that money for, towards the salt shed.
Yeah, the $8,000 that we had.
Right.
But that had to be voted on.
Right. No, that was voted on.
But it is already made, and that should come out as part of the 20, I would think.
Right.
Right, that's eight that goes, so I mean, whatever, what did we, I don't have any good numbers in front of me, but what we think of...
So, where was that high?
Our total part of the...
It was, so it's allotted for that certain...
Separate line item.
It's not one that...
It's not in the budget, it's a separate line item, if you understand, correct?
Yeah.
Or fund, or whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, is it actually reflected in here? No, it's not.
Highway fund, right now, right now, we have $128,000, $128,568 in the highway fund right now. And part of that money is the money that the $8,000 and all those, that's the collect, that's the amount that's available right now. Fund balance, restricted, we have $8,000 in restricted town shed. We have a highway fund of $120,000, and we have a $25,000 balance. So, we have 150, I'm sorry, 150 minus the 25, 741, which is the fund balance. So, we have $128,000. Let me just, I want to get, I'll be right back.
What you don't know is, years ago, like, three years ago, Jimmy Rogers, the town leader, wanted to put $8,000 for the floor, and then the following year, was it following year, Rick Mark? We decided to change that and put that into...
What did we decide to do? We decided that the salt sand shed needed replacing more than we needed a cement floor for a cold building, so we allowed that money for the new salt shed to go toward it. And then that grant came available from Wyndham Regional, that if your salt sand shed was within 50 feet of a wetland, or stream, or river, you could qualify for a new salt shed grant, so...
And how much money do we have to come up with, Dave?
I think it's in the neighborhood of $36,000, minus the eight, so then it's, then whatever, that is 28. But it's about, I, that's my recollection, that it's probably gonna be around 28 that we have to, that is our match on the grant.
You know, all right, the, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Well, are we still on the salt shed?
Yes, we had, the grant is $188,000, and the amount that the town local matches, $47,000. And that includes the additional for the management fees that the, I mean, the regional commission is taking over. So, that's all inclusive, the $47,000 is with that.
So, we got 39.
I read the email from Mary May Gay, Mr. Gode, and it showed the floor plan for the new salt sand shed. And this was a, you know, it's not really budget related, or is it? We had talked about getting a new fuel tank for the equipment, and it needs to be a double-wall fuel tank. And me and Archie had a little conversation about it, and brought it up a few times. We figured, maybe once we got the new salt sand shed, we could put a side roof off the side, because it's supposed to be covered.
Okay, like I did on my shed.
So, I'm wondering, before we finalize it, I mean, basically, all it needs to be is a couple pressure-treated posts with a roof that would cover the...
Like I did on my shed.
But I was looking at the way that Ron Bell designed the building, and the way it sets, if we don't maybe want to rethink it for this item, and do we want to actually add a little bit extra in the budget for that?
But you're talking just, you're talking of course the tank, and of course, we're talking of the shed door.
The tank and the roof, I mean, it's not a major expense, but it's something that the insurance company specified that, you know, you're supposed to have either setting in a tank, so that if it punctures, it catches, or they come double-lined metal. But we need a roof over it to keep condensation and vaporation levels down, so...
How long is, do you know how long the tank is, like a Frigo Stange Royal tank? Which is about...
Yeah, I mean, you can get any...
Which way?
Gallon quantity, but, you know, the one we have now is less than eight feet, so...
Then the width is nominal.
Yeah, it's not gonna be, I noticed passing by the state highway department in Jamaica, that's what they did, they have a big salt shed, it's concrete with metal flashing, and then they brought their roof out, and they got their tank, which is a pretty good-sized bulk tank.
The bottom line, and in the budget, we have budgeted $39,000 a year for summer maintenance and so forth. Would, do you think maybe $3,000 or $4,000 could come out of that $39,000?
Yeah, possibly, we could do that now. I priced a tank a couple of years ago, but the tank alone was about $3,600.
How big a tank?
Uh, like a 300 gallon, and what it is, there's double wall...
It's not like what you put up.
Oh, okay, because I just put a tank in my house, $800, yeah.
And then the pump was another $1,200. But, but it's something I wanted to put out there, if it should be budgeted, or, I mean, right now, the tank works fine, but we're, as far as, when the insurance adjuster came around and had us adjust certain things, he had been pointed that that was an issue.
And each year, we also put $1,000 in the budget for town shed maintenance.
How much?
$1,000 a year, we've been doing that for a number of years.
Has it built up?
Oh, yes, so we have some, I don't know, it's in that $150,000 that we have in the highway fund.
Okay, because our issue is, we got $47,000 we have to pay out for matching grant, minus the $8,000 that we had set aside because of the, because of the floors, we still had a $39.
Yeah, okay, but look at your revenue, and, you know, without getting too long-winded, is, each year, we're getting $40,000 for the state, each year, we put in $39,000 for summer work and so forth, what we've been doing, so we have $150,000, $160,000 in the highway budget now.
Okay, but how much of that is liquid that we can use towards the 39? Don't know.
Well, you can use what it's gonna take, I mean, you know, the bottom line, when we figured that, we knew that we had the money in the highway department.
Right, but is it gonna take from somewhere else to...
No, we can take from all of that.
Yes, yes, the only one that's...
So, we've been, we've been running essentially a surplus on the budget for years, and...
With these thoughts in mind down the road.
Knowing that there were things eventually we would need to pay for, and that was part of the thought process of being okay with the scope of the project, and what our match was going to be there. So, I mean, to get back to the real point, I mean, I think our, though we might, though we ultimately show after the fact what the incoming revenue and the outgoing expenditures were for these grants, generally speaking, this money, unless there's some, well, even if there is some weird timing thing, is being, the payments that we're making to this are coming out of the surplus that we already have. So, strictly speaking, we don't need to be holding back money in this budget for that project. It may well be in our best interest to hold back money for future, for the ability to be, to have liquid for future projects, but that project has essentially already been saved for previously.
Okay, great, and if, if to eliminate some, we level funded last year, and I think if we level funded this year, we would be in great shape, in great position for the money for paving, and the money for hill road that we're gonna have to pay. So, I don't see, you know, I don't mean, I don't think we have to add any more to the budget.
I just wanted to put that there for...
Oh, no, no, and I, yeah, that's a great point.
And also, if, when the topic comes up about when we get ready to start the shed...
It's not a surprise.
Yeah, because the way the building is turned a little and sets out, maybe we want to rethink it for that item.
So, this is something that we really need to get, we really need to let Ron Bell and Mary go about now.
And there may be some grant money for that.
Yeah, I think probably there is.
For the shed door?
No, for the, for the oil tank.
For the...
Little shed door for the oil.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's pretty normal stuff for the shed door, because you only cover him six by four.
The way the roof's gonna pitch, you can only have it on one side or the other. One's gonna be kind of in the woods.
Your concern about the positioning.
Yeah, I just wonder if we attach it to the new structure, if you do it on the old structure, you're in between two snowbanks, so that's, the other side is kind of on the wetland side. So, I'm thinking if, I don't know if it's possible, if we have run, back it up a little bit, so that it doesn't interfere with...
What about the existing, the existing building that we have now, on the shed side, if you just went out and did a little dork kind of thing, where you could put that fuel tank, and that would satisfy the heat supply?
And the roof, it's, it's close to the bank, and it...
But isn't that shed being replaced?
No, no, no.
Not the greater shed, but the salt sand shed.
Okay, I see, I'm on the wrong building.
So, that's an option, that, that might work well.
And keep it out of the way of everything else, and...
Rather than them having to redesign the whole project that's already ready.
Yeah, I just wanted to have it as a topic.
Absolutely.
Well, something we're gonna have to do anyway, because they already told us we had to do it, in essence.
Kind of like, why are you...
Well, another, not to, we should probably have a discussion about this in a different meeting.
Well, no, his concern was having enough budgeted money.
Yeah, absolutely. But between like a double-line tank and the single-line tank, we can just get like a tub for it practically. That's what we, you know, exactly, concrete piece, so we should definitely discuss that more in the future, because I think we could save, like, instead of $3,600, it's like $300 that we don't have to spend, so...
To do what, Joseph?
Just get a tub, a concrete tub, to meet the insurance specifications, rather than getting a double-line tank. Because all they're concerned about is spill, so they want to make sure that...
To contain it inside a concrete tub.
And that's what the double-wall tank does, you don't have to contain one unit that we can't ask them.
But you think a concrete tub won't let out any...
There's a couple of other criteria that the oil industry, the petroleum industry, has made the state mandate, so, you know, but by the same token, you know, moving along, I think we have sufficient funds to do that, you know, based upon the money that we already have in the highway fund, so we can just go past that.
So, you're saying a concrete tub wouldn't, wouldn't let out any residue with the...
No, it just, it wouldn't let out a spill.
No, I'm talking about internally, if you've got fuel inside a concrete tub, will any, will you have any kind of residue that gets into the oil, into the fuel from the concrete?
I don't...
There may, there may not, yeah, and this is like a spill.
This is like a spiller, this isn't a tank.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it's like one half of a septic tank with no opening, and you set the metal tank down in it, then if it ruptures or leaks, the thing...
Oh, okay, oh, I see what you're doing, I'm seeing.
Okay, so, let's run, let's run through the line items of the expenditures. So, summer salaries and mileage, and we could also use this as a little bit of opportunity just to let Shelby and Joseph have a little more detail on what some of these are, if any of them are unclear. So, summer salaries and mileage, the last couple of years, we've budgeted 17, 230. We've been under that. I'm not sure where we are.
Uh, right now, we're at forty one fifty three. But we have this summer to go.
Right.
For twenty nineteen, so you've got at least over that.
Yeah, and some of these grants that we've applied for, work has to be done on the very last day of our fiscal year, so there'll be more too.
So, right, well, and right, and depending on, right, depending on what grants we apply for next year, we'll be in the same situation. At the end of this, the budget that we're looking at now, as far as needing to get work done by June thirtieth, first of all, in the year in order to satisfy the grant.
So you think seventeen would be a justifiable number?
Or leave it the same, seventeen to thirty?
Oh, you you can.
Now, any savings or or not savings that comes out of the highway budget has nothing to do with the municipal budget, correct?
No, it's part of the municipal.
No, it's part of the overall.
It's a separate line item, it's a separate fund, so.
Right, and and we do break out and warn the numbers separately, but but they are part of the overall tax burden.
Seventeen to thirty?
Is is there any, since we're not spending at all anyways, and it's going into the.
The highway fund.
The overfill highway part, which it certainly did. Is there any reason why it's seventeen to thirty instead of just seventeen even?
Uh, I don't know, there was something, we base it upon hours, I think, when we came up with that number originally. Hours and, you know, machinery and so forth. I mean, you can round it off, I I don't think the two hundred thirty is gonna make a difference. The bottom line, I guess, what we had always tried to is that any. Any surplus would go into the paving fund.
Yeah.
Which we would do when we get a match of a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, if we have a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars there matched at all.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, and I agree, that's that's very important, especially looking forward.
Without getting crazy.
Yeah.
That, you know, that, right.
But I was just curious, you know.
Yeah, I don't know, that's sort of.
Guy has to be that criteria, a hundred and seventy something thousand?
Is that it?
It has to be that criteria, a hundred and seventy thousand.
No, you can use it, you, if you only have a hundred thousand, then we'll match a hundred thousand. If you have eighty thousand, but the maximum is a hundred and seventy five, so you shoot for the maximum because that's found money.
So what'd you decide on?
Um, I'd like to suggest we to just point, let's round it off just down to seventeen.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
And also makes it easier to explain if somebody comes to town meeting and asks where you got that number. Like, you know, I mean, like, explaining the kind of that choose it easier, it can be like one of those stage moments for somebody who wants to come in.
Right, you come up with a two.
Well, also, there's, there is a lot, as you guys know better than me, and there's a lot of people in this town that look at the budget, and if it drops by two hundred and thirty dollars.
They're happy.
They're happy, so if it goes up a hundred dollars, they're pissed, so.
That's the unfortunate policy of, you know, budget, you know, when people don't really understand, but that's okay.
But it is gonna be favorable every.
That includes emergencies, you know, we had, we had Irene one year, we had, you know, flash floods here, so that's what all that is. It doesn't happen every year, but you don't wanna be caught too short.
Right.
For sure.
Okay.
Um, so another thing to note is that summer employee mileage and. Grant related salaries, which I guess we called that at some point, are also numbers that essentially roll up into that. Though they're not budgeted for separately.
They're part of the seventeen thousand.
Yep.
Um, summer payroll, tax expenses, literally the payroll taxes.
Predicated on.
Predicated on the salaries that we're paying, so. I would suggest we keep that at thirteen eighteen, since we anticipate basically satisfactory as far as hours and. Corresponding expense.
So keep that thirteen eighteen?
Thirteen eighteen, um, summer contract services and equipment rental has been thirty nine. For the last few years.
Yeah.
Actuals twenty two five?
And basically, we use, I did the projection when I was doing the machine last year, and in five years, we spent ninety nine thousand dollars. So being close to that thirty nine thousand is important because it's really hard to tell when something's gonna go wrong. So if this makes sense.
Pretty big buffer. That's right, that would average like twenty thousand dollars a year, right?
Yeah.
And by doing that, we're not increasing.
So five years, ninety nine thousand, so, so you're kind of averaging twenty thousand dollars a year in actual expenses, and we're budgeting for thirty nine thousand dollars per fiscal year.
For the simple reason that that's predicated on a catastrophic event happening or something, whereas the town, when you get a tax bill, if you get a a big jump. You're gonna go crazy, where if it's a slight jump, it's a little easy because we have some money in the fund for this, that grants don't pick up or something else, so. It just makes it easy to swallow, and the fact that it was a level funded thing, it didn't change our. Our commitment, you know, what we had to raise.
From the tax, yeah.
But that would be a number, if if you wanted to attack a number, that would be a number that you could, that could be manipulated.
If we need to, but at this point in time, there's not so.
Well, I mean, we certainly could, but I would, I would agree that it's in our interest to level.
Yeah.
Oh, I follow that.
Well, again, you don't know what the price of sand is gonna cost, you don't know what the price this is gonna cost, nothing's going down, but we're still gaining by a little funding. Yeah.
Yeah, but just not increasing.
Yeah, but just even not not lower.
Because there's a nice buffer built in there, yeah, I'm saying, yeah, but that's a good, it's a significant, it gives us something to work with.
Um, you know, like with the. Highway material, you know, one year we jumped up four thousand and the next year we came down, so again, if you. I don't know, Mark knows more about that than anyone else in regards to material, uh, do you see any us using more or any less or?
With with paving coming, uh, we're gonna grind hill road, and we'll use a little bit there. Shoulder gravel and a little bit of maintenance on the road itself. I don't see us going super, you know, above that number that we've used. No, our roads are, as long as you can apply approximately the same amount each year, we're good, there's a couple of years where I couldn't. And the roads got behind, so I think, I think if we level.
Twenty one thousand is good?
Yep.
All right, so we'll keep that at twenty one. Winter salaries and mileage is essentially the stuff you need to do in the winter.
Yeah, with the grader knock down the the.
Snowbank.
Snowbanks and stuff.
Yeah.
Pick up trees that chop out of.
It depends on.
Right, and obviously, we're projecting a year from now, so it's a little hard to.
Of course.
But generally speaking, I think we've, we've done okay with budgeting what we've budgeted.
Yeah, we're operating in a nice circle, so it's like, so.
So we'll keep that at eight hundred and sixty one presumably is the right number for that, I didn't calculate it, but I assume that it is.
Thirty three, that's basically what we paid for the snow plowing.
Yeah, you know what, Doc, he rounded up that. Why did we still go out when we put the roads out for snow bid? And I said, well, that's something that, you know, when you put it out to bid, if you didn't wanna save the eight hundred.
As far as like pushing back banks and stuff like that that you do at once.
But I don't, I don't have a problem with it, the way it is, it.
Oh, I see what you're thinking, put it in plow, plow, plow bid, but that would be next year, oh, well, wouldn't.
But then, then.
Yeah.
Cuz this year's a way to cover it.
Okay, because when we got the bid, it was from one vendor to do the plowing, but.
He's got it for two years.
This is not.
Right, right, yeah, this is the second year.
Oh, this is the same, and.
Right, I mean.
I mean, some.
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm gonna be wrong about it, but I I tend to think we're gonna end up spending that money either by paying the vendor. Or to push them back separately when they need to, or potentially paying Mark to push them, the other thing is, we need, I think we need to budget. Something for, because there are gonna be situations that aren't related to the plow company that still need Mark's time.
Yeah, and I think that's why we actuated.
Yeah, we're talking.
Also, I don't know how much we've cut that down anyway.
We're talking nominal money here, two hundred, took a thousand, so.
Yeah, it's like seven years, I don't even have to go out, and other years I'm out several times, so.
Sorry, Joseph.
The added benefit of running the grader in the winter, which is important. To to try to say that we wouldn't push the snowbanks back ever, we'd just say that maybe we won't touch the grader for the entire winter. I, you would agree that it's good to get a couple hours on that.
Yeah, yeah.
On a question. If we're gonna pay for it either way, we might as well do it in a beneficial manner to our our town owned piece of equipment.
Yes.
Right, the other thing is that I mean, I, this is, I I'm not saying this would necessarily be the case with. Clark or with Fitzgerald or anybody, if we if we had them, I mean. There's something to be said for us being able to control and planning to control when there's a. Visibility problem on a corner or things like that. The reality is, we'll probably be able to react to it and be more conscious of it than the vendor would be, maybe, although that's probably not the case with either of them, but.
Now, is is Archie Clark's budget for thirty three, is that what he budgeted, that was a bid for?
No, the bid was thirty one.
Thirty one?
I think, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, am I, or thirty one four, possibly something like that. I believe it was between thirty one and thirty two was what our bid was each year.
Okay.
Yeah. That's.
We have historically. Even though that was generally what the bid had been coming in as, we've tended to budget thirty three, I mean, for one thing, obviously, we're talking about budgeting for.
Next year.
Like a winter from now, and we don't know what the bids will be.
Exactly.
Um, it's unlikely that the bids are going to go down, so it probably is in our best interest to.
Keep it at thirty three.
Keep it where it is.
Yeah, I think so.
And not, again, hopefully they don't, you know, whatever, they're not gonna change drastically, I don't think, but.
One in nineteen, it looks like it was over anyway.
It was over that.
So it's not unheard of that, you know, a bid's anything, that it's not gonna be a few thousand dollars more, so.
Well, it changes, this is is a fuel, if a fuel spikes and they're gonna, they're gonna up it, that's all there is to that.
Right, so we'll leave that at thirty three, um, winter materials, we've been pretty accurate with. I mean, the. Yeah, I think it would be fine, yeah, so I think we should keep that at twenty one. Town shed electric, we've done four fifty. Is there anything about the new shed? The new salt shed that we think is, is there any difference in, doesn't make any difference.
I'm hoping that will be less, because they'll use high, with all the new building, uh, new building codes, when builders build now, they have to use. High efficiency lighting and so forth, so maybe it might be down, but kilowatt hours went from thirteen to fourteen cents, so. You damn if you do, you damn if you don't.
So it round the balance.
Not really a question.
Since Peter Wyre added the new.
Yeah.
No, see, the lighting, you think that's safer.
I bet it.
Because it wasn't on all the time.
It was on all the items, it's this huge antique light, and these small halogen light bulbs do twice as much as that one in Humdell.
So leave it the same or or go down?
I really don't know how's the electric bill prepared.
All right, well, I can tell you right now that we spent a hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty one cents on town shed electric so far as of. December.
The only other thing that we use electricity is when I go in and turn on a light.
Right, this is the time of the year.
However, Clark's machine that they park in the shed to load their sand and salt on their truck.
Has a heater?
Has a heater, they even keep it plugged in, but it's on a timer that comes on and off, on and off, so it's not running full time, but it keeps.
So leave it the same?
Yeah, I think we should leave it the same.
Yeah, so leave it the same.
That's the only item that would use electricity, an air compressor once in a while.
Um, town shed maintenance, to Guy's point, we've, we've been budgeting.
A thousand.
We budget a thousand a year that we don't, like, have we spent anything?
Not really.
For us, we're not. We get new lighting in there.
Yeah.
I think here did.
Would you attack, no.
Did the work that you, did we, any of the material for shoring up the old. The existing sand shed and stuff, would that have come out of that?
Maybe.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe it probably did. Yeah.
But that's a good buffer to have.
So we're building up the fund, yeah, it's a good thing, just better than cutting it.
Um, okay, so we'll leave that.
Caught behind.
We always budget money for seminar costs. Like we do for. In the general fund, I'd suggest we keep that.
Yeah.
Insurance. Time?
We had it built at eighty three hundred dollars, which is all included under one brother.
Right.
And I I thought that, when I spoke to Sam, with Sarah a couple of days ago, I thought she said she spoke with you and you.
Well, yeah, she she printed a, she generated a report on it, but unfortunately, what she generated was the, was not the right. It's the VLCT dues.
Oh, no, no, no.
Which is not, yeah, she got that, what she thought was the insurance. What had the insurance, but it it isn't, it's it's the history of the.
What does the insurance cover the the highway?
Well, my assumption, um, yeah, this is, whatever, it's wrong.
We've budgeted forty two hundred dollars, and from all, everything I've seen, the way things are, I would suggest that you keep it at forty two hundred dollars because. It's not gonna go down, and last year, we paid, uh, thirty six eight, so I think forty two hundred dollars will give us a little whittle.
And I think if I, if I'm correct, I, we think this is actually sort of essentially, we have an overall. We make an overall payment.
Right.
For the insurance coverage of all the town buildings and. This is the portion of it that we allocate to the highway buildings through VLCT.
A group insurance.
Right, right, so we we insure all the town buildings through VLCT, so this is a portion of that.
So leave it at forty two hundred?
Yeah.
Right, because that, I mean, that does go up over time, and we don't know where we'll be at that point, but.
See, in the county, Rockingham just had a couple incidences with their highway trucks not making a hill and coming down.
Oh, really?
The bank, total drain and trouble.
Who is?
Rockingham, the last snowstorm, they took over a new road that's very steep and. A new truck didn't make the hill, it was in the reformer a couple of days.
And totaled the truck.
Yeah, they had a couple incidents, but I think that insurance is what, you know.
Yeah, right, exactly, right, exactly, it's.
It's for rate, it's for everything that we use, lawsuits.
Right, well, and also the building and the buildings, um, okay, town equipment, fuel, parts, maintenance. We typically budget four thousand.
And that was, again, that was predicated on not only for parts and, you know, fuel and so forth, but also somebody set aside that if the grader. Had a serious issue, and also for a down payment in the event that the town wanted to purchase something, so there was some money in that fund also that could be. You know, set aside for that.
Yeah, tires, you know, every twenty years, if I have any tires.
And they're not cheap.
Um, any reason to think we could knock that down a little bit, or should we keep it the same, or do we need to?
Well, with the thinking of, you know, possibly the town may be engaging in purchasing a piece of equipment, this would go to.
Presumably, it would be.
The treasury department of the state of Maryland wants twenty to send down of anything before they'll finance the five years. So if we have, which we have sufficient funds now, um, I I think it would be good to level fund that and keep it that way because.
Yeah.
Um, you know, if you drop things four or five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, on the overall budget, it's not even gonna show. You know, unfortunately, and do we, sorry, Mark.
I I definitely think that this year for sure, we shouldn't drop that, because if we, if we do purchase a piece of equipment.
Yeah, a thousand bucks just remains.
We'll definitely want that money in there, and it'll, it would be a lot easier to to level fund it this year than to bring it down and then push it back.
Right, yeah, yep, yeah. Right, yeah, yep, yeah. And correct me if I'm wrong, but just conceptually, we, uh, if we do buy a piece of equipment, because of the scope of the equipment that we're talking about buying and stuff. It it is going to likely cost more to maintain, I mean, it'll be an additional piece of equipment than the grader to begin with.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
But it's also likely something that we have.
Every machine requires.
Essentially more maintenance just because it will be used.
Right.
Well, maybe not, I guess.
Just on, just on fuels alone, if you've got.
Be an additional thing.
Machinery instead of one.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
It would take a little bit more.
So I think like.
Okay, so we'll leave it at four, sorry.
Four is two, right?
No.
Four thousand.
Aside from the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The the maintenance costs themselves, you know, unless something big breaks, it won't be, it it's not like it's gonna be a crazy jump. So like if, but then, like you said, we're using something a lot more and there's a potential for breakage. And if it does break, there is, you know, we're not gonna lie, there is the potential that it's gonna be an expensive break.
Yeah.
There's nothing on.
Nothing is cheap, nothing is cheap.
The grader, there's some cheap, a few cheap parts on it, there's no cheap parts on these things, so.
No cheap parts. Um, okay, uh, road signs.
Well, it looks like do we have pretty much all the road signs up that we need, or we still need more?
No, the list is ongoing. I think that, I've been living on materials I purchased the year before, the year before, as far as, uh, the post.
Yep.
Uh, those brake people run into a back.
Oh, yeah.
Nut bolts, but the signs themselves, we still have, uh, we replace all of our stop signs.
The big.
All the stop signs are now bigger, bigger letters, and they wanna keep that reflectivity up to.
Okay, so some you have to replace, right?
So, so stop signs is, there's a lot of them, I I forget the number, there's a dozen or more in there, you know, sixty bucks a piece. The posts are like forty bucks a piece, um, so I I feel like, what's that?
Just, but just looking at two years ago, I mean, you were way under, so maybe just because of time.
Yeah.
Do we know what we spent this year?
You working way out over time, which is not like you're gonna go do them all at once, so is eighteen hundred really a realistic yearly budget?
Right.
It is because of, uh, there's actually a date where all your signs, your street signs are supposed to be bigger. And the reflectivity is for each, so by, I think it's twenty twenty-five, you're supposed to have all your street signs upgraded to the new state, state standards. So I I kinda use the sign work for stuff after the, I have like a priority list, and unless the sign was stolen or broken, I usually don't deal with them unless it's requested. So, uh, it shows that I didn't really put out a lot, but we do have a pretty good list of signings.
To do over five years though, right? Like, just eighteen hundred seems, I mean, I don't know what, what was this current year, do you know where we're at with it, does anyone have the?
Do you have a total for the sign?
God, you have the current year for the.
My whole first scrolling wave, we think we scrolled away a lot of times, I'm just kinda curious if this one really is not realistically, like, a little bit over budgeted, or it's a lot over budgeted?
Yeah, right.
Right, right now, right now, I'm showing zero, but that doesn't mean anything because she could have some bills in there that she hasn't posted yet. This was taken today, she may post on Friday, but the bottom line, we do a lot of work, it does a lot of work in the spring.
Yeah.
Um, so I I I think, you know, what he pointed out makes a lot of sense, the signs are not cheap and, um, and even adults. That one year, if I remember right, that was one year where we had, uh, the bills kinda crossed in between, they didn't get both in one year. And they were from another year, so I think that's why that.
Well, yeah, and so much of this gets done in the middle of the summer, so the timing of a lot of these things is about.
Right.
Do you wanna take it down to fifteen, or you?
No, I think eighteen, like you said, we've been using, you did fifteen the last year.
He used two.
No, he used two hundred and ninety-seven.
And and.
He fifteen, he was fifteen hundred dollars over, I mean, under.
Under?
He only used less than three hundred dollars.
Right.
Alright, this is.
That's the only reason I'm asking, are we trending a little too much squirrel fund on this one?
And efficient. Yeah. I mean, I I think, I mean, if if you're comfortable with it, I think your suggestion of maybe just bumping it down to fifteen hundred.
Oh, wow.
It's not.
And it's watching the trend, yeah, not like cut it to five hundred.
It's not gonna create a, make a touch. And even then, if we end up being three hundred or.
Yep, the bridge being replacing, bridge, uh.
Well, this current year.
He's just, he's just explaining how many he needs to be replaced.
Can we move to fifteen hundred?
Yeah, I I can stay in that budget of fifteen, and if we, it looks like it's.
We have to get it somewhere else, yeah, we can get it.
Then, uh, we.
And that's if you're able to do them all in one year and they don't roll over to the next one, which will be budgeting four hundred and five again, yeah.
Fifteen hundred, okay.
Yeah, we'll just lower that a little and try it. So that was fifteen?
Fifteen, yeah.
Now, culverts is quite different too.
Um, culverts, we always.
Yeah.
Budget forty-five hundred, um. What do we think, well, we basically try to do all the.
It's no current, I thought.
What's that?
You guys just did one.
This is my culverts, we.
Older ones, the.
We initial is, and there's still a lot that.
Yeah, I mean.
Right, we got so many in there that we have to replace that, I think forty-five hundred is a, is a visible number without getting into the big sixty thousand dollar culverts.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, when we have this whole thing that, you know, by, is it twenty twenty-one, the end of twenty twenty-one?
Oh, the water.
The hot, the priority.
Yep.
Issues on the mapping that Windham Regional was putting together, there are, there are a lot of things that we do need to bring up to a improved standard that involve culverts, that that that.
That we can install, that we can.
Right.
Yep, right.
I'm just curious about, um, how much the last, because you guys just did one, right? Mark, did you just replace one of them, what what did that one cost to do?
Yeah, yeah. Um.
I don't wanna touch that, I'm just curious.
I didn't see the totals that Sarah put together, but, uh, it was an eight-hour day.
Yeah.
Um, with an excavator, so, uh, one load of gravel, I'm gonna say it was like fifteen hundred.
Yeah, okay.
With labor and.
So we did three or four a year?
That's forty-five square.
And that's kind of what you've been doing for the last several years, right? Is is just sort of knowing that, okay, we can generally probably afford to do three or four of them and picking off the worst of them as you work through.
Right, yeah, that, on the map, they're graded as they check up, so.
Yeah.
Uh, they'll have them graded and which ones should be replaced first, and I already know of some that are undersized, they're not, they don't meet state standard, they're metal, rusted out, so.
Hill Road this year.
Five sites already.
Hill Road, you're gonna have to replace a couple when you do the paving this year, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we'll look at those and make sure.
At least, I thought.
Um, there was one that, uh.
Right by Sunny Lane?
No.
Right by Sunny Lane where it goes to.
Yeah, at the bottom, yeah, I think.
I'm sorry, but.
That's more trash.
We'll look at those and see, so it's, those are bigger ones.
There's a one across the Sunny Lane.
So we'll leave, so we'll leave it forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred. Um, as we see, there's the actual expense from nineteen for the box culvert that we talked about earlier. Paving, um.
We've always set thirty.
Always, always set aside thirty.
Yeah, what do we got in there now? You told me once already.
Uh, keep it at thirty, I think, because.
No, 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 we have any, we have leftover from last year.
The total from the last couple, three years, if you're.
He's saying one fifty, I think.
Oh, yeah, we have, uh, some.
Because we didn't pay, we didn't pay principally because of the price of fuel.
Right, but we we exhausted pretty much the paving fund when we did the one seventy-five, and we did some other work, we did Bundy Mountain Road. We did things, so we almost started all over again, but by the same token, we would not be eligible for grant for what, five, five or six years?
Yeah.
So by putting thirty thousand dollars away each year, we can have a substantial amount when it does come time for magic grant.
Okay, but Hill Road doesn't go for a magic grant.
No, it doesn't.
And how much do we have in there now?
In the paving fund, let me just see.
It just lumps everything in here and I don't, sounds split, right? The only restricted I have is the eight thousand for the, the, you know, that eight thousand, yeah.
Yeah, for the shed.
Do you think at some point in the future, since I, I think we're all in agreement that we need the money, that it's going into that fund?
Yeah.
And that's why we are, uh, kinda fluffing up some of these numbers, like, we just dropped the signs down to fifteen hundred, which is, even with the money that we need to spend over the next five years, it's probably gonna be a little high. But we do need that money somewhere else, so do you think at some point in the future, it might be a little more transparent to put, say, like, the sign, the road sign fund down to something more realistic? Like more sustainable, like five hundred, but then take that additional thousand dollars and just put it where it's actually gonna end up being used, at the, at the paving, so we.
Right, the only thing is that when you put thirty thousand dollars into a dedicated fund, cannot take it out for anything else.
In asset interest.
You can't.
So, that's why we did the line-by-line items, the paving is a dedicated fund.
But the road sign is not a dedicated fund?
Um, I don't, I think each one is dedicated.
Part of the.
Is it?
Yeah, I think the balance it carries over for that is is.
So we're operating at a surplus on road signs, we can't take that to pave with. If we've got a line item that has surplus for, because if that's, you know, you sort of, so if even, oh, everything we've got a little bit extra, a little bit extra, and that's rolling over, so there's this, a little chunk in there of that total
Does that change?
Oh, it will. Yeah, right.
That in theory is allocated to road signs, we can't use that to pave with?
That would be necessarily is a.
I'm not sure, I don't think that.
Thing for lines that are not.
Yeah.
Funds that are strictly speaking.
I think it's only if they're restricted funds, they're restricted, then you keep using for something else.
Right, that's it, right, that's correct.
Everything else rolls over and can be used channel fund.
Anyway, what do you?
The other thing is that some amount, like we talked about, it, and road signs may or may not be a good example of this, but in some of these, I mean, certainly paving is a good example of it. You, part, part of the theory behind running, keeping it budgeted amount, even though you might not be spending thirty thousand dollars on it next year. In three years, you're gonna spend ninety thousand dollars on it.
Oh, alright.
And and to some extent, like with signs and some of that other stuff, that is also the case, that you get into a situation where you need to spend two thousand dollars on signs.
Yeah, but I think.
Where, again, maybe you're still fine if you were budgeting.
Um, I can't remember.
A thousand, but you might not be if you were budgeting.
Yeah.
Does it take you restricted funds? I I can't remember, I thought we did.
And I, and I get that, but.
Could you take money from paving to do roads?
For the most part, I think that, and we have a lot, so I'm picking on signs because it's actually a good one.
I don't believe it. I don't think that, no. That's a ridiculous point.
Yeah.
We have a lot of sign work coming up, but, once we're done with all that sign work, it would be reasonable, the this actual that we see here is a reasonable and sustainable sign number, like, three hundred dollars a year, so.
Maybe, I mean, again, because remember, as soon as somebody hits four signs, we have to place four signs, and there's a lot of unexpected.
If we're whatever, if you average.
Four kids.
And I mean.
And there's a lot of unexpected.
And kids stealing.
We can own, right, I mean, there's, a lot of our sign work, work there is because of vandalism.
Yeah.
Not because the state requiring us to change something about a sign.
And I get that, but but I guess my point is that, and we could pull, you know, even longer-term, you know, budgets. My point is, some of these are habitually, uh.
Yes.
Over budgeted for, and that's a good thing, we, I a hundred percent agree, we need that money, but I think that, some, a lot of the complaints that I hear from people looking at at our budget as well as anyone else's budget in government, is they say, like, why the heck do we have to spend eighteen hundred dollars every year on signs? When we would all agree that that money, although sometimes we might spend more than eighteen hundred dollars on signs, goes towards paving.
Well, that's true, they don't understand how the budget works.
Often times, or towards culverts.
But but it would be very transparent, well, it would be transparent, more transparent, I feel, to put that money in a less specialized fund, like the paving fund.
Yeah.
And that, and it makes more sense because, because realistically, that's what a lot of this money that we're kinda, I mean, we are sort of inflating the numbers a little bit. A lot of that money is going to go towards paving someday, so what does it make?
But we think, but we think the paving is restricted.
It is.
Yeah, I think it is a restricted fund, and the other thing is that.
It is. You can't take life for paving for your road signs.
The reason that we went into these line-by-line by line-by-line items, is it's a truefold thing, number one, if someone wanted to, uh, challenge that at this town select, at the panel meeting, they said, you know, we're not happy with this. It also gives them a chance to see exactly where our money is going.
Yeah.
See it for signs, it gives them a better understanding of how our town works, if you, if we would just say, okay, the budget's a hundred eighty-two thousand dollars, they'd say, what does that mean? It doesn't mean anything to me, whereas this, I think, is as, as transparent as we can be without, you know, tripping over each other, saying, you know, a dollar for matches, a dollar for this, you know. So I, and I understand your point where you're saying, engine dollars for size, but some year we will spend it.
You know, the the other thing that I just would point out though is that, um, and and this isn't, this doesn't explain all of the situation, though I think it does in in our town and many other towns. We don't have a, uh, particularly, uh, you know, we don't have an entire accounting department.
Right.
To be able to manage the fiscal accounts and the detail of budgeting that a private company would have.
Yeah. Or even a big town.
So the reality is that some amount of the way budgeting and bookkeeping is done with these is to keep it within the scope of both the hours and the skill level of the people who are charged for doing it. So it, it does end up being fuzzier than most professional companies would be comfortable with, certainly.
Yeah, when we present this at town meeting, none of this is really there.
No, it is.
Yeah.
It's a sample.
All of this gets printed in the town.
Everything breaking.
Still.
Literally the exact same.
From five years I've been on board, I've never seen anybody really get into the contestation of of each little part unless if they were talking about something specific, like what Jimmy Rogers did that one, you're only allowed to spend eight thousand dollars on on the floor.
No, but I I do think it's a really good point though, that it doesn't, it doesn't help, and it's not, it isn't beneficial for any of us to have numbers and to have this broken down in ways that don't make as much sense as.
They're not accurate, so.
So there are, and there may well be line items in this, I mean, it's maybe a little bit more noticeable perhaps, a little easier in some ways on the other budget, that, you know. If if there are things that we're just always budgeting for that money because we're always planning on using it for something else, then we shouldn't do that.
And the fact is that we can hold it all up.
It just complicate, over complicates it all for all of us who have people on that server, but.
Well, then it comes down to figuring, then it comes down to figuring out where that money's coming, going to, and then should be like more transparent, like Joseph said, should, it should be forty thousand dollars of that.
And I don't think they're just saying, like, to put so much, to be so exact, that there's not that overrun, it's more like, so say we looked at five years of road signs, for example, and we found that we actually averaged eight hundred dollars a year over five years.
Right. No.
Yeah, right.
So then we say, well, actually, maybe a more realistic surplus budget would be a thousand dollars a year, because then some years you build up, and then we go, okay, that eight hundred dollars, let's start allocating as a paving, because we just know that we've been over. And that can just help with demonstrating how much we're really committing to paving, you know, and things like that, I think he just means like tweaking, not like going like to the duck, to the dollar, like we're, you know, but just trying to, if we are able to make it more clear on certain light items, like, hey, like, we're actually, we've, we've just, because now we know this trend over five years, as we weigh over budget. We make, we we start allocating that more specifically to the restricted fodder to pavings or something.
Right, and and unfortunately, we don't have, though we could, we could attempt to charge the treasurer and assistant treasurer with with maybe figuring this out in the future, we don't, we don't have.
Yeah. Or. Yeah. I would have that now.
No, we don't store on that.
This is the other thing, like we've talked about before, and I I think it's no small point to make about the budgeting, particularly for highway stuff, is with the fiscal year falling when it does. The numbers between one fiscal year and another fiscal year are very fuzzy.
Right.
And it isn't necessarily the same thing from one spring to the next, so you would really need to look at.
The averages.
Averages over several years and figure out what the trends are, I agree.
And then. Yeah.
Um, it's, and I I don't think it's bad.
Just out of curiosity, replace one sign, labor, material, everything else, ballpark figure.
Probably a hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty.
The vault owner, buck.
Yeah, so you're looking at ten signs at a, at fifteen hundred dollars, right?
Yeah, yeah. And there's still a lot of street signs that are gonna be upgraded, uh, speed limit signs, stop signs, bridge signs.
A lot of the streets still have to have the big signs, right?
We have a mound that was built up, tells all the signs and the ones that meet the specs.
Yeah.
But I just wonder, you know, we're talking about the budget there for what, uh, twenty-eighteen.
Line treatment.
So we had eighteen hundred saved for signs.
Mm-hmm.
And on this budget, it shows we spent three hundred. So for that budget, that year, where does the other fifteen go? Back to the general and.
That goes into the highway fund because you're allowed to roll, the highway fund, you don't have to give back to the people at the end.
Every year.
The municipal side, if there's a surplus, we must vote in article and say, we have three thousand dollars like we did last year, and we put it into a surplus fund or a capital improvement fund.
So against you, it's not, it's not like it accumulates and it's just sitting there, it, it gets.
The highway just stays whole.
It's not staying in the time line.
Unless it's restricted.
It stays in the highway fund suite, but you don't spend it.
Yeah. But if you needed it in a different area, you could use that, that's.
Yeah, you can use that. Except for restricted fund.
Because that's not a restricted fund, what the paving is.
Right.
Um, okay, let's jump back down to, um, paving, re-treatment lines. We wanna keep paving, keep budgeting thirty.
I think it's a good idea.
So according to this, we have twenty-nine seven left from last year, is that correct? It says.
Uh.
Yeah, we passed.
Wait, we didn't do any paving, just a little patch, right?
Okay, so we don't have enough to pay.
But wasn't that used, wasn't part of that used for doing the lines on Hill Road?
No, we did.
About fifty-nine thousand dollars.
I'm not sure. Is that lines?
Yeah, that's.
And it also comes as.
But that was the year before.
You're gonna take it from the regular part of the.
That was the year before. Yeah, that's always, that one's hard.
And, that's something you wanna do every, every year.
It's not having a conversation.
I know that the state comes through and does their collective, but as far as the other ones, that's, that's definitely out of your question, you know.
I'm not, because you were collecting those.
I do. We don't tell them, because they want the oil to dry. We don't have the West, right?
Sorry Bruce, did you have some, you're, you're talking about whether we are gonna have enough to.
To, to the paving, and Joseph, we're at the point that we still have extra money and, and a regular part of the highway budget, which, like I said to Joseph, like, I want, I wanted to pay it last spring, but we couldn't do it, but wasn't proved to do it because of the price of oil coming up. Yeah, the previous year was the, was, was much less, and we were able to do, get as much done as we did.
It was awful, yeah.
But tentatively, we have that entire plan that we discussed.
Right.
And that's why we're doing it this next year.
And the bottom line, to be honest with you, with Hill Road, if we submit a bid early in January or February, you will give our best price and best window of opportunity.
Yes. Yes.
So that's something to consider.
So we should bring that up there, a meeting in January or later.
Yes.
Something we'll put on the.
Process, remember.
Somebody will help me remember when we make the agenda next weekend, that, that'll be on the.
No, I do.
What's that?
First volunteers to help you remember.
I'll help you remember.
We have an awful lot of stuff on the A T P already, so we won't be discussing it then, but it's something.
I think it would be.
Tell me, remember, put this, an item for our first meeting in January, and we can.
Okay, because you're looking at.
We heard F P and get it out.
You're gonna have me listen to thousands of dollars, maybe ninety thousand dollars, Joseph, for a while.
Our first meeting in January is eighth in the.
Yes.
Oh, okay, we're almost there.
Paving, which is.
Surplus.
So we're leaving that at thirty thousand, the next are just repayment things that we're not budgeting for.
Joseph. We're gonna have ninety-five to a while.
No, yeah, the three thousand for the bridge maintenance.
Three thousand for bridge maintenance is again, to some degree, a.
Insurance.
Insurance for when we have to do some.
We do have money in the bond, that, that bond, when we took it out, it was for bridge. And if we had to, we could tap that, yeah, fund.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that?
So it's general, so, so to speak? Yeah, yeah, no, just for bridges, that bond is just for bridges, but if we got into a gym where we have bridge maintenance, and we had to get some more money, we could take it from that fund, if we needed it.
Wait, so the, just to understand this bond, where it says.
Okay, that was coming out.
Ten thousand dollars.
That's what we pay every year.
We pay ten thousand dollars to the bond?
Right, for the bond.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's not a bond.
Yeah.
We didn't say that, but, God, we should have gained, we have ten years by now, aren't we?
Uh. I don't think we have maybe three or four more years.
Oh, good.
I don't know if I, if I recall, yeah, we've had it for a while, that was when we did the bridge.
Yeah. Right.
Now by, you know, yeah, by where you reach, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
The, how do you, the bridge right by.
By Bunny Road, no?
Yeah, by Bunny Mall Road.
Yeah, by the T.
Oh, okay. So you always forget the bridge.
Yeah. That was a bond issue, yes, yes.
Because that was, that, that must have been almost ten years, right?
Actually, we're getting closer to the end of this bond, yes.
Not, not ten years, but.
But getting close.
No, we're probably getting closer to it.
You know, the nice thing about that is if it was shortly after.
Shortly after.
And then, so we, so.
Two thousand and three to two thousand and five.
But that's the.
The way.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
That's good.
Road bridge.
That's the one bridge.
And then we say.
So ten thousand is the bond repayment.
Yep.
Um, but then we have interest on that, budget for separately. Dropped that to thirty-eight sixty last year.
And from forty to sixty.
Down from, because presumably the interest is decreasing.
Yeah. Right.
Because of the, because the principal is increasing.
It's not a variable, is it a variable rate or fixed?
But we continue going the same.
What, is it fixed, fixed rate?
Yes.
Okay, so we could probably go down to like thirty-four or something like that.
Um, I don't know. Uh, you probably could go down to thirty-five hundred, I would think. Uh, let's see if we made it, maybe.
There was probably shut that before we cut it.
You can tell when it, but it's right, pretty much, you can tell it's trending, I pretty much will put it to a square.
Well, I mean.
I left my amortization book at home. I have it, it's great, so.
I have a hundred percent of you.
I have the, I have the internet.
Yeah, right. If you have the interest rate.
Seven millennia, I have a goal.
So are we leaving that at?
Uh, this year, this year we paid two thousand fifty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Ooh, that was pretty.
What was that, on the bond, we paid, the interest was two thousand and fifty-four dollars. So we could subs, we could drop that substantially.
Is that?
That's an awfully big, are we sure that there might not have been?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Because we already, we're sure there's not.
Well, I'm sure the actual, we paid the budget, we paid the bond principal of ten thousand.
We don't pay it.
Two hundred and fifty.
Uh-huh.
And then the bond interest was supposed to be, we budgeted thirty-eight sixty, and we paid two thousand and fifty-four. I would think that the interest went with the, with the bond payment.
Yeah, you would think that.
Yeah, you don't isolate the, yeah, all right, you can put a question mark there, but, um.
That might warrant a question mark. Out of everything.
Um, well, it, but it, I, the, the thing is, is that for, for, for things like that, probably the answer to that question is in this room. So who are we asking this question of?
Yeah.
Um, because in fairness to Sarah, I'm not sure, I don't think Sarah knows.
Yeah, I think, I think if I was.
Bond.
She has the bills that have been paid, I mean, if that was.
Well, I, I generated this report today at three o'clock.
Right.
And I'm showing the interest being paid at two thousand and fifty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents for, for a year.
So we can draw, so we can put it at three thousand?
I think you could put it at three thousand.
Twenty-five hundred.
But by the same token, I think, um, I could ask and get an exact number. But that, I don't see why you would pay interest in, in quarterly statements. Wasn't there, what was that, that, oh, the.
But I mean, we very simply could just contact, who holds, who's the bond with?
Uh, Vermont bond, you know.
I'm sure they know, they plan on charging us next year for interest on our incremental amount.
Yeah, yeah. So they have.
So just put a question mark?
We could just call it that.
Well, I would just put down three thousand dollars for now.
But tomorrow.
And then, uh, we can, I could just look up.
Let's put in three for now, and I mean, we have a number of, we'll see when we go back to that, because a number of things that we don't know are fine, but.
Yeah.
And maybe no, a lot of times the total balance is dwindling, the interest is reduced, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess that's a.
What was that sequestration?
It seems like a state jump, just maybe given.
Yeah, it's a law for only paying ten thousand dollars.
Given the previous.
With that, we're struggling. Then, oh, is it, when would they have that sequestration thing where they changed all the government funds and everything else? I wonder if that.
You know, talking about the.
It's happened a couple times.
This question, that was, yeah.
Isn't that fifteen?
I wonder if that expired?
It was, it was Obama was still president.
I think it was fifteen.
Yes.
Yes, I believe you're right, it was pretty close.
So that made, because that bumped our interest up.
Yeah.
Good.
And maybe that, that expired?
The sequestration?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's still affecting that.
I don't know, because that's what, that's what.
Well, maybe no for you the bond.
Yeah, because by the way, it seems like something when we do the finals, you don't have to estimate, we could know.
Yeah, I'm gonna find out, that's the question, they could change the.
So you make a note?
Yeah. Oh, could you make a little note for me? All right, all right.
Make a note on your report.
All right, the bond interest.
Okay, so that's, so that's the last of the line items for the.
Before you.
This number here.
Yep.
All right, I got no. We had no, uh.
About the paving.
Road closed signs, no detour signs, and I think that.
Yeah.
From what?
No, all of us.
So I think, other than the street side stuff, I'd, I'd.
So maybe we should.
It's really hard, we.
Maybe I'll look at the fish, see if I can.
It gets really interesting.
Yeah.
Gets weird, it gets really interesting for me to do like fifteen things in one day, I walk around. I do today.
Totally seen your pad, Bruce, I've seen your pad, probably.
Well, you're.
Yeah, huh?
What?
You whipped it out with your car.
What?
Yeah, you went out to your car, you got it, so you freed from it.
Well, no, I remember you said you had to buy some.
I did not, when did I do that? I did not.
You did.
It's supposed to be a certain height with reflectivity on it.
I do, you know, I do a little, I, the thing with that, you said, yeah, I got everything on my list. Except for one thing, I didn't fix the bond.
So probably at some point.
So I think it's on the side of things.
Um, I just had one request, that I would like to everyone to consider. For the last couple of years, Fact TV, Brownlow Cable, all those companies have been funded by monies that, you know, given from the government, so forth.
Every time you remember.
Those have been diminished incredibly, and, um, Fact TV and, uh, Brownlow Cable, um. Tate meetings, Jamaica pays eight hundred dollars to, um, Fact TV, Towns pays a thousand dollars, uh, Newfein thirteen hundred dollars, uh, Dunston twelve hundred dollars, I would like, uh.
Where are we?
Uh, Athens pays fifty dollars, we have, we have dodged the bullet, you know, the, I've been doing it for free for a lot of years, but the bottom line is that we cannot continue at that rate, and they're asking for a thousand dollars, and I think that's pretty reasonable. Because if we don't, we're gonna lose that, that.
He's gonna take his camera and he will.
Well, yeah, I mean, unless we wanna go buy a camera and hook up to YouTube and do all that stuff ourselves, but
Because that's his camera.
The, the, uh, the way it works now, it's so good, it's fifty dollars a meeting, basically. And it's a little less than fifty dollars a meeting, he said he would settle for, he would like to see a thousand dollars. Uh, and I think it would be, I think it would do the town a great service for the, the transparency that we seek. I think since we've been filming online, many people do from town to town, take a look at that. And I can tell because I can see it did settle on that.
And that, and that also includes him to having to take it to Bell's Falls.
Okay, that's, that's nearly the end there. The bottom line is that, um, we have been lucky because we haven't paid it, but towns in the, surrounding towns have been paying for two or three years, and this year now at the funding is really gonna diminish, um, they need our support.
So, how are you proposing, do we do this, should we add a budget line item or something?
Uh, I think it should, uh, it should be a line item for, um, Fact TV.
Do we already have?
There's the road fund, you're on the general.
No, no, on the, on the, uh.
He said we were through with the, but this one.
Oh.
It has wheels.
Was that?
It has wheels.
I already had it set.
Okay, so let's, yeah, so let's segue back to the operation pages, um, and let's talk specifically about that. So, um, I'm just looking to see, do we already have an expenditure line item with that, if it makes sense?
They're working through it, they're presenting.
Or do we want to.
I do have a, a question, a question. Is there a reason why putting it on YouTube wouldn't be better? Because it would be easier to watch it on YouTube.
They tried it, but they, they don't have enough employees to keep it up, to get it on it right away.
They're gonna have to pay a subscription rate, going to YouTube, in fact, I'm working with them now.
So they.
No, but why couldn't we, why couldn't we just make a YouTube channel and put it on YouTube, that's free.
Uh, who's gonna download it?
We could, we could do it.
Well, you gotta do the graphics, you gotta do the downloading, I mean, um, I mean, I guess you can do anything.
Yeah.
But you know, it's an idea that you think about, but then who's gonna do it? Is it gonna happen every week where when I do it, uh, when whoever takes that camera to the studio, they download, they put it up there, it's guaranteed, it's on Brownlow Cable TV, it's on YouTube, and it's on, you know, any device that you want, so.
It ends up on. Public access. See it on TV TV.
They do, they do see it on, this is my question, is that access?
Oh, it is on, it is on, it is on.
Is it scheduled?
It's on Comcast, yes, it's on five days a week, five different times, we can see.
There's a schedule, and they show everybody's.
Yeah. Yeah, Howard and Roger.
Yeah. Scott knows that it watches.
Okay, Thursday at eight o'clock, Brooklyn's like.
Okay, all right, no, that answers my question, so you just go to, to like, the, the.
Okay, he told me no, it's not.
Apparently they don't have two weeks anywhere.
Yeah, and I, I think it's transparency.
If it's scheduled, and it says Brooklyn will play on Tuesday at eight P M, and again on Thursday at five P M.
Obviously. Okay.
Yeah, 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 I, I don't have to hear, but that answers my question, and I do think that that's worth continuing.
Do we want to, we don't want to hear that.
Yeah, I, just, you know.
I, I might as well just mention it. Ah, peace.
And like, which is not crappy for a current YouTube channel.
Hold on. I.
But no, I agree, that's, that's a good idea.
And I also take the town, annual town meeting and people really tune into that for. You know, so, okay, so I'm thinking a thousand dollars. You know, he said twelve hundred, but I said, no, that's not, I don't wanna choke them and kill them. But you know, I can, I can see their struggle. You know, their, their funding has been almost, they're evaporating. So.
Okay, I'm not, I mean, I don't, I'm not really seeing anything that.
Yeah, I'm looking.
Where it's necessarily appropriate.
Just make a line item for it.
I've, I've read them all, I don't think there's any in there that we can, that we can drop tail on.
Yeah, but I do think, I do agree with Bruce, I feel like it needs its own line item.
This too. Yeah, I think so too.
It's a big deal.
It'll give people a chance to see what, you know, what it costs to do things. And from where, where, where we're sitting here, it doesn't look like we're too hurting in our, in our general fund. Because you just align item Fact TV support. FAC TV. Support.
And I thought the thousand dollars is gonna hurt our, our bottom line.
Okay, so for the time being, let's, let's just, I'm, I'm not gonna add it in yet. Cause I, I want us to talk through this about that first.
Yep, alright.
So, alright, let's just, I'm gonna just add it. So we're gonna call, what are we gonna call it?
Fact TV support. FAC TV.
All costs.
Well, we're actually, I, I mean, not that I, not that I want to, I understand the spirit of why we're going to do it. But I mean, we are essentially paying, we are paying them to put our meetings online.
Basically.
We're not.
Right.
I, what I, I don't wanna describe it as though we're supporting it.
It's not a donation, we're paying for a service.
It's not a, we're, we're paying for a service, so it's for.
Okay.
We're, we're budgeting for having our.
Media or whatever.
Meetings online or whatever.
Okay.
Fact TV media?
Fact TV recording fee?
Oh, yeah.
Broadcasting.
播放费.
Broadcasting, yeah, let's just call it broadcasting. Which that also then, you know. Makes it clear that it's, you know, an item that when we move into future, if and they go out of business.
Right, right. Or whatever.
We've budgeted for money to be able to do something to fulfill that obligation.
Something changes. Uh, what'd you call it? You called it?
Fact TV broadcasting?
Okay.
Um, okay, so that's a thousand dollars. Um, okay, so just as a quick overview to the operating side of things. So you'll see. If you drill down to the bottom line of everything, we're three hundred and sixty-eight dollars over the last year's, well, now a thousand. Three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So thirteen hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
And that's given the three thousand we had to give for.
That's given, yeah, so, so there's a couple of things to, to note about that. Particularly on page three. We're, and we're gonna go back and hit on all these things briefly, but on page three, the items that are. italicized and underlined, like rescue services, fire department services.
Yeah.
Dues, VLCT. Landfill fees. Insurance, bonds and county tax. Those are all. Very much estimates for numbers that we should get actuals, but we have not gotten actuals.
Gary, I wanted to send an email today with the nine thousand dollars for the fire department.
The same as last year.
Sorry, so.
Gary wanted to send an email.
Oh, okay, so, okay, so that's, okay, number, okay. Um, okay, so that's, we assumed it would.
Yes, I got it.
But the bottom line is on those items, there's a little wiggle room, we don't know exactly what the actual's gonna be.
Right, and, and in all likelihood, we won't know the actual for some of them. But it's just something to note, whereas the other numbers we've, we've more discussed and decided on the number.
Uh huh.
Based on information we have, whereas these are guesses based on previous history.
And it's really hard to tell because you don't know.
Right, I mean, county tax, Sarah pulled a report on county tax, it kind of bounces around. Some years it goes down a little bit, some years it goes up a little bit by a couple, a hundred or two hundred bucks, so.
So you figure we're at about thirteen hundred dollars up from last year? Is that what she said?
Right now. Wait, nobody is to do.
Right now, yes.
With the thousand dollars for the.
With the thousand dollars.
For the Fact TV.
Now, I'm sure this is like something you guys already talked about, but the license and support, that went up a lot. That's I'm sure just we need.
Uh, that, yeah, NEMRIC, NEMRIC, uh, we've discussed.
NEMRIC, yeah.
Oh, no, yeah, sure, so just.
When you weren't here.
Yeah.
No, okay, what happened is that Cyclone Security and everything else, they haven't raised their, their prices in years.
Yeah.
And everybody on Listserve and everything else says that this was a very good deal because if you go to other vendors, it's much more expensive. And the support was astronomical. You called them up and they're right there.
No, yeah, that's cool, I, I figured it was already touched on, but because it was such a significant number, I just wanted to help with my own brain, yeah.
Yeah, no, just do explain what happened. Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The other, so let's just go kind of page by page.
What are we on?
Page one. Revenue wise, we basically, we talked through all that, we bumped a few things up a little bit. So the, the positive thing to keep in mind is that. We're projecting at the moment, our revenues.
Six point nine five.
For some reason, I didn't add those. Um, hang on, one sec.
Ten seventy-five? Is it?
Of course, we don't have the tax number yet, so that's a little bit. Yeah, I don't want my super expressions on there.
Ten seventy-five?
Um, yeah, we're basically, sorry, unfortunately, there's some numbers that can't be entered yet, so that overall calculation doesn't work.
The only number, if you took that top card taxes thing out of there, then you could make sense of it.
Yeah, so we're about eleven hundred and thirty-five dollars. We're projecting our revenues to be eleven thirty-five higher than they were last year. So we're pretty much down, you know, net, if you net the two out, we're two hundred bucks over.
That's gonna be by thirty.
Oh, wow, I did it by thirty-six, sounds good to me. I wish you wanna knife it more than that.
Do you have a?
What's the math?
Do three hundred thirty-six divide, eleven hundred divided by three hundred thirty-six?
Three point two seven.
So three dollars, it might be a three dollar difference in your tax bill. With these sums as you have right now.
Well, right, although that's not, that's not, it doesn't really go by parcel, it goes by. Taxable value. May, maybe it ends up working out roughly the same, but I mean, depending on the greatest.
What do you want?
But as a general, right, as a thumb.
Yeah, I mean, that's just a ballpark figure.
Right, right.
And that, I guess. In a world where astronomical changes are happening, every time we turn around, you get some in the mail, you know, this change.
Yeah. So let me just ask this, because what I would really like is, I would like for us, before we move on to appropriations. Which is another thing. I'd like us to just quickly go through, and I'm literally just gonna kind of go page by page. Does anybody have any concerns about any of the numbers we put in? Yeah, page one, I'm gonna say we're not really gonna change anything, cause it's revenues that were. But in page two, expenditures.
On page two, just wanna clarify, and I think I remember this conversation, but, cause like the, we bumped up treasurer, tax collector and down assistant treasurer. Right, so that was just, uh, just because they swapped.
Because she's.
Yeah, yeah, so that's just, that's why that happened, so it really only went up like five hundred dollars.
But then. Right, what we also did, um, at the meeting with discussing with Sarah and everybody is we also added essentially budgeted for more hours.
Yeah, I do, cause it's like five hundred more.
And also back at the historical treasurer rate of pay, not the rate of pay that Sarah is currently being.
Right.
Given.
Okay.
So that we're prepared for those costs rather than, so, right, net, it ended up being probably six hundred bucks.
Yeah, five hundred, yeah, it was, it was, net, it was pretty, it wasn't crazy.
But yes.
I was remembering that because of all the treasurer changes, that there was a lot of, even that first discussion, there was a lot of movement in the number, sometimes. Clarifying, cause that's a pretty significant, that one looks significant visually, even though it doesn't net different that much. So I just wanted to make sure I knew.
And then I should also add that I went back and figured out the adjusted payroll taxes.
Okay.
For that. Based on the increase in the. Based on the increase in the wages, so that number should be fairly accurate.
So you talked about a point seven six five?
By point oh seven six five, yeah.
Making it that slight forty-seven dollars.
Yeah, that's.
Exactly, so that's why I pointed out the payment, because we are essentially budgeting more, a little bit more salaries, so the percentage of that that goes to payroll taxes goes up.
Okay. Awesome.
And otherwise, things basically, we're staying the same on that page. Anybody have any concerns about page two?
The only, only other thing is if we decide adding building commissioner. When I first came up with the idea, I came up with the idea of Doc, it being a salary. And Doc got all over my garbage about it, she thought it was a really bad idea, that, that there should be something in there for a building commissioner, whoever it is. I assume just not even, for me, not to worry about that. But if down the road, that's gonna make a difference between.
Well, we don't worry about that in this budget thing until it's been approved.
I think that's something we worry about in the, right, I, I agree, I think we worry about it in the future.
Not this year, but once, once it's been determined.
I don't think we jump that.
Right, like we did with the road commissioner, we already had the road commissioner in place and then.
Right, exactly. Right, no sky then for.
Five, long, to show it, okay, okay.
Okay. Moving on to page three. You know, abatements, we projected to come down a lot, so that's a, you know, that's a decent drop from what it was before. Like we said, rescue services is a guesstimate based on what the increases have tended to be and guessing what that increase might be. Fire department, we now know that's accurate.
When do we get an answer on the rescue services?
We know what a nine thousand is, as far as the mutual aid dues, I.
Uh, mutual aid dues, we know.
Oh, okay.
There is told us that, and it's the rescue ink there. I think we tend to not find that out until January.
I called VLCT this afternoon, uh, we had problems with phones all day, we had no phone, uh, until about two o'clock, three o'clock. But to see if they would give me an idea of what the dues would be. And I wound up just leaving a voicemail, but it's gonna be pretty close to what we had, that figured out seventy-seven.
Right, so that's been, you know, bumped up gently, just cause it seems to be going up about that amount. Obviously, like we were talking about, the big hit on this is the NEMRIC increase, which is twenty-eight hundred.
So we're keeping the six.
Luckily, luckily, we're offsetting that with other things, so it's not.
Yes. So that worked out pretty well.
It doesn't feel, we're not feeling that as much. The landfill fees, um, that is the number that has been approved. It still has to go through a review process and towns have the opportunity to contest it and all this other junk. I don't, I think it's, there's also hanging out there the possibility that the bins might get taken back, which.
Yeah.
If that happened, this number would go down slightly. Because we would benefit from that, but then the other recycling thing would be wrong. But anyway, this should be a good number and I think it's probably gonna be the final one. Insurance, again, that is the, the sort of guess based on what it has been, what we've. What we've been budgeting, even though.
It seems to come under.
Yeah.
Only based on this limited snapshot, like what?
Yeah, exactly.
It's in one year, but.
And we've pretty much concluded that we're gonna do the, the recycling as a separate.
Same with county tax, so.
Dave?
Yeah, so I, I'm now completely in agreement with, that we should do recycling as a separate article. And I don't wanna get too far into it now, but Sarah pulled the year-to-date numbers. And we're pretty much gonna be right about at eighteen thousand by the end of this year probably. So I have a call in to the guy at Triple T, cause I wanna talk to him before the solid waste meeting to find out what they would charge to rent bins now, so I got some idea of.
Good idea here.
So we may, the good thing about, also about warning that as a separate, as pulling that out of here, is we can finalize this while we're still figuring out what number we wanna. Float in the article, because I'm not yet sure.
Right now, I'm sure.
I don't know if eighteen's gonna be.
Seventy-five point seven as of December, so you're gonna.
It's essentially, which is a sin, I mean, it, give or take, it's probably five months.
Yep.
It may be a little, but so, right, it comes out to eighteen basically. And that's, you know, their trucking fee went up. I wanna talk to him about whether he thinks they're gonna need, they're gonna increase it again, in which case that might bump things up. Anyway, we'll talk about that more at the next meeting.
Now, in last year's budget, did he have that as a line item for the recycling?
No, we pulled it out and warned it as a separate article.
Yes.
Which I think we're all whenever you made it.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And that way, there's less, like we talked about last time, there's less potential confusion of eighty thousand or a jump in the budget.
Right.
Let the town decide whether they want to take it.
And it's something people need to decide about, cause it's a big expense.
You also jump, yeah.
Uh, okay, so any, and then we'll add in the Fact TV broadcasting.
Yep, okay.
I'll throw that in there. Any concerns about page three? Is everybody comfortable with that?
I think so.
Alright, um, and then we just talked through the numbers for pages four, five and, four and five for the highway.
One, six, the total.
What's that?
I mean, it's six is just sort of the.
Yeah, and so the total, I did just. So the total for the highway. As we have it currently, ends up being five hundred and thirty dollars below last year. So when you balance that out with where we're. I mean, I don't know, I can't do all the math in my head, but I think when you take into account the increase in the revenue. For the general fund and the thirteen hundred or so over in expenditures. That nets out as being about two hundred dollars over budget. And this five thirty brings us, I think, net across the two, we're probably three hundred dollars under last year. I think, I'm just speculating.
And then barring whatever ends up happening with recycling, end of the day.
That's.
Right, and that's.
But I'm saying, but it really won't be different after town meeting day, yeah.
Right, if it's.
But I'm saying it's good, we're starting ourselves out with strong.
The larger, by separating it that way.
Right. Right.
It separates it from the regular budget, and if, if they choose it again at eighteen, it's global fund.
Well, and it makes it, and it makes it easier to explain and be transparent that, okay, if we end up warning it at twenty, which we might need to do, or might need to warn it at twenty-one.
Yeah.
Then we know it, it's easier to compare, we, it was eighteen, you know, as opposed to being.
Right, yeah, they see that big jump.
As opposed to being buried in all of this and having to explain the overall budget having gone up twenty-one versus whatever.
I don't mind having this disturbing that what you're gonna come up with will probably be something of an increase from what the article was warned at last year. I doubt it's gonna be something.
We don't know yet, that's what Dave's gonna find out.
Well, but, but the thing is, is that the, I think it's gonna have to, well. I think we. It would be foolish for us not to budget for. Having to, if we continue to offer that service. To budget to have to rent bins. Because while they, while I'm hopeful that the district isn't going to take those bins back right now, they may well vote to do it at some point next year.
Okay.
So I think we need to budget, I think it's smart for us to budget for realistically a worst-case scenario.
So you got that as.
So people, so people can decide based on that, rather than thinking it's gonna stay at eighteen and then we find out it's twenty-two.
Boy.
Though we might be able to absorb that, it's still, people need to understand what they're paying for.
But Guy's got his thumb, because he pays the bill, on what, what our consumption is at this point, so it's a pretty, we're getting a pretty, other than the previous years, we've got a pretty relatively standard number we're working.
Well, hopefully, but I mean, we don't, I mean, presumably. Presumably, the cost of processing the materials will not just continue to go up, or else no one will do it anymore.
Yep.
So that'll solve the problem, I guess.
That's, that's a huge problem.
But one, one thing that I do, and that's why I wanna talk to Peter at Triple T, is, you know. They, they hadn't increased their trucking fee for a couple of years, they increased it last year, they might be anticipating increasing it again, and if they are, we need to bump it up a little bit to account for that. It's not a huge amount of money over the course of it, but it's five hundred bucks. So anyway.
But the bottom line for the municipal side of the budget, we're at point forty-four cents this year, I don't see that changing dramatically at all.
That's a great thing.
Right, for the, yeah, I would think. Again, I mean, all of this now has to go to Sarah and Samara has to help do all that part of it.
Okay.
But, okay, so let's talk about appropriations.
Where are these in here?
Yeah, it's separate.
Sorry.
Appropriations are.
Appropriations are separate.
Okay, and I understand this is separate, I don't know if this was housed, all of our appropriations per year were housed in the budget somewhere, so we had it.
No, well, it's, it's, if you go in the worksheet, um, at the very bottom of page. In the page for the first line item there. Appropriations.
Okay, now, that's, that's for perfect.
Proposals voted separately, that's where it shows up on the, in the overall budget, yeah.
Yeah, where we see it reflected. So we haven't proposed anything for this yet, so this isn't being factored into that.
Correct.
Number that we're like, it's whatever.
That's a separate article.
And it also gets warned separately.
Yes, but it affects the overall budget.
Yep, yep.
I think we're like, cool, of course, this is where we're at, we think we're, after being down here, up here, down here, up here, we're around here, but that, that doesn't include this yet.
No, correct.
Okay, okay.
Yep, yep, exactly.
Okay.
Um, okay, so.
So last year was sixty-three oh six?
Yeah, and that's.
So.
Well.
It's separate, Doug.
Oh, there's a separate, uh, it should, I thought I placed a couple of copies there for you. There should be one for you right now. Sitting under. No, there should, there's a separate, there's a separate sheet like this, I thought I would, is there something unlooked by? Also.
What's up with this one?
What are you looking for?
This is the old one?
There's one dated, updated twelve six.
That is, that's the old one.
Oh, yeah, you got one?
Okay.
Do you have one to see? Pretty much.
No.
Is that it, twelve six on here?
Oh, wait a second, did she, wait, no.
Eleven oh five, right?
No, twelve six.
Twelve six.
Twelve six. There were, there were previous versions of this.
So that's, that's new.
You need one, Doug?
Yeah, I'll just make a copy. I'll get you a copy tomorrow. Yeah, I'll just make a copy. I'll get you a copy tomorrow. Anyone else need a copy?
Oh, wait a minute, Guy, wait a minute.
Yeah, I mean, I know that I made that.
So.
But that's okay. What are those two things? No, that's fine.
That's fine, twelve-six.
Okay.
I'll make three copies.
Oh, stop it.
Jeez.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I guess one thing to say is all of you, I don't know if I wrote it up, actually, I think I didn't write it down. There should be a handwritten eighty dollars.
I see that.
On the sheet. Because that's part of the discussion. We'll wait for that to get back.
This one's for you, twelve oh six. Throw your one away. What do you have here? Twelve oh six and what do you want?
No, he.
Everybody got one?
Okay, so one thing to note while we'll talk.
Yeah, I wrote it in.
You did, okay.
We need a copy of mine, so.
Okay, so let's just run down the list because I, there are a few things that I want to comment on for them. American Red Cross, by all indications, we received no request from them for an appropriation.
Sweet.
Seems a little strange to me, but I'll just note that.
Our current date was what, end of?
Well.
Well, I think it's an important.
We've been thinking of it as being effectively the end of November, though they tried to inform people of it being the end of October. A separate thing, not to, not to get into at the moment, is that Guy found an appropriation policy from another town that for one of the next couple of meetings, I'm going to rework for ourselves so that we can think about passing a formal appropriations policy that we can put on the website. So there'll be no confusion about this.
That's a really good idea.
It's a very good idea. So thank you, Guy. Thank you, Guy, for figuring that out. So we'll work on that, but for now, the Current, the bus service and all of the.
Were we going to vote on it, Mary? I mean, on the Red Cross, are you going to wait and see if she's got one we didn't notice?
Well, so I guess here's, I was going to get to that, but I'll say it now. I'm a little concerned that we might have misplaced some things.
Exactly.
Because Vermont Center for Independent Living was listed as not being anywhere, but I found it in the folder, so that's why I handwrote it in. I looked through everything that's in the folder and I've, that's the only missing one that I found. But I'll say that the fact that we don't have one from the American Red Cross, we don't have one from Leland and Gray.
Bad, I remember we got.
Which maybe we got, yeah.
Yeah, Steve Meyer does that.
Yeah, okay, so not having one, we also don't have one from SEVCA. We don't have one from the Humane Society. Which would be really surprising to me if the Humane Society didn't send us an appropriation request.
They're really.
And I regret the fact that I didn't notice this sooner because I love, and I'm, I'm going to make, well, let's. So conceptually, what do we do about people who have, I mean, if we, if we can't find them like we might have lost them and we don't have appropriation requests from these people, do we want to reach out to them to try to clarify if they genuinely didn't send one or if it may have just gotten lost in the mail or misplaced somewhere?
If I remember correctly, last year when we discussed the appropriations and if we did not have a record of getting one, then it was voted around the select board whether or not we were going to keep them on or not keep them on.
Well, the appropriations that you're missing.
We did, but I'd say they're diff, these ones are different than what that, among other things, I think last year we had it, most of the ones we were talking about, I think, were new ones.
Yeah.
It just, the Humane Society one is the one that I've.
That helps you.
So just generally, people, I personally think we should reach out to the people.
Yeah, I think so too.
Okay, so I am, I am willing to reach out to, well, I'll certainly reach out to the Humane Society because I can call any and ask her. I don't know about SEVCA, Leland and Gray. The other thing I'll say is.
The other one was Gerdas.
Well, Southeastern Mountain Community Action, I'm pretty sure they're viable and it seems like, I thought I saw one from them, but I can't swear to it.
I, I, I sent an email to Sarah, but she hasn't gotten it yet to just ask her to.
Re-look it?
Whatever she can do to look around if there might be some other place.
Because, you know, there's been changes of baskets up there and stuff and who knows, but, you know. I think you reaching out to them is the best idea.
Okay, all right.
But Gerdas didn't ask last year either?
No, Gerdas didn't ask last year, so I, Gerdas doesn't concern me particularly. I'm not sure why it's still on the list, actually.
So more the ones that last year that did this year.
We gave a hundred dollars last year, I thought.
Right.
I know.
That was a separate one.
Yeah.
We did get a.
I'm remembering.
Or that might have been two years ago, but. I think it was two years ago that they gave us, and it was the first time, so we warned it separately. It was approved, but then the next year, we didn't get a request from them. So, and I, we, by all indications, haven't gotten a request.
Project Feed the Thousand, that was the one that went to the.
Yeah, so that.
Goes to towns. That went to towns and food.
Right, although that is also one that we have not gotten for the last couple of years.
I thought I saw something in there saying that, that the, instead of Project Feed the Thousand going to Brattleboro, it was going to go to the individual communities, and I thought Towns was in there.
Yeah.
I'm almost sure I saw that, but.
That's what. Townsend Food.
A request from the, from the Project Feed the Thousand.
Okay.
Almost sure I saw that, and it was supposed to go to Townsend. I mean.
Well, yeah, I mean, I know in, in, what I will say is we definitely didn't get one last year. And it appears we haven't gotten one this year. So I might just need some help, Guy, at some point, just figuring out who to call for some of these things because I don't know who any of that.
I know the Leland and Gray is Steve Meyer. He's in charge of that, he's always been a little.
Late because I think it was left, we got an email last.
All I have to do is give Peter Meyer a call at Mary Meyer and he'll get ahold of his brother and say, wake up.
All right, do you want to do that?
Yeah, I will, okay.
Okay.
Wake it over and.
Yeah, that'd be great if you could do that. Okay, the American Red Cross I feel like is a different situation. Though I would be supportive of.
Yeah, I think they're.
Approve it one, have we gotten one? I'm not going to begin the process of trying to figure out who one might call with the American Red Cross.
They have a local chapter in Brattleboro.
All right, somebody want to?
I'll, I'll give them a call once.
Okay.
I also think, though, that worst-case scenario with that one, they're a large enough organization that they will try this again next year, even if it was our bad. They're not small enough that they're going to be like, we're not going to waste the postage on them again. You know, it's not like so small, I think, that they would give up on us, worst-case scenario.
And some of them, like American Red Cross, we've had as a appropriation for so many years that they just take it as a given, but they should, we have to change that. We have to make sure that they follow the laws and rules.
Okay, so then, so all that being said, going down through, and let's just sort of talk through people's feelings on whether we want to move forward.
So Gerdas, we're not doing anything with.
Gerdas, we're not going to do anything with. The Current.
Where, where.
The last couple of years, I believe, we've, it's been proposed and they've, they've.
They're discussing each one.
One, two, and five.
I'm just, where does the Current even, how would people from Brooklyn ride that thing?
Uh, it's a bus service.
Their letters in there aren't shown at all.
And I have seen it come down Grasshopper Road.
Right, they send special, special.
You have Medicaid funding, you can set up Medicaid rides if you have Medicaid. But, but no, there isn't a route through Brooklyn, there's no route where people could in the community access it, yeah.
All right, all right.
It's super fun.
Anyone, and we're not really voting on these, but just, just by consensus, so we're sure that we're all basically on the same page. Anyone opposed to continuing to, to approving the appropriation request from the Current? Okay, all right, so we'll leave it at, again, we're going to warn all of these as a detailed article in the town. But we're, you know, we're the ones who are suggesting or not suggesting things. Grace Cottage Foundation, three hundred dollars, which is what has been the case for several years, I believe. Everyone okay with that? All right.
Yes.
Greenup, fifty dollars.
Yeah.
We can spend it to find somebody to take a Greenup for me, or Vay Camps, I guess, it's not like we even got the money. I don't even get the money. Groundworks Collaborative, three hundred dollars.
And what do they do?
That's a cooperation of a different.
All of the mothers.
Groundworks is the drop-in center downtown, so if you don't have a lot of money, you can pick up food at the food bank in town in addition to, you know, help with housing vouchers if you have seasonal issues. They're, they have case management, they do a lot.
Yeah, they do.
And they're in their regional, so like they serve all of Wyndham County, even though we have our own food bank, you could still come from here and go hit up the food bank in Brattleboro as well. Which is now a plan, right? We have a relocation.
How do people feel about that? Any opposition to continuing to support Groundworks Collaborative?
I'm good until we finalize.
Even it?
What do you do with ones that aren't, are new? Like this isn't on the list, but if there's a request there.
Yeah, well, this is one, oh, this, well, let's, we, we'll, let's go through the list first and we'll talk about that. Though I will say that we have not supported that in any of the years that they've asked for it before.
The Select Board has the right to reject anything that doesn't have anything to do with the town.
Right.
Unless someone presents a petition of five percent or more votes.
Right, and so, right, so for, for, right, for Shelby and Joseph, the case we haven't talked about before. I mean, I think generally the approach has always been to look at, okay, how does this benefit the townspeople of Brooklyn? And if, if we're not convinced of a way that it really benefits people in Brooklyn, then we don't.
It's the difference between funding more public library or rocking and public library. Like, it wouldn't make sense for, you know, say if we got a request for rocking and we're not going to put that part in the town because it's not even related to us.
Okay, Historical Society of Wyndham County, two hundred and fifty dollars. Anyone opposed to that? All right, we'll do that. Leland and Gray, we haven't received a.
And it's normally two hundred and fifty.
Appropriation request.
I think, let it give out grants for.
For certain kids and stuff, I think.
Right.
For going to college. Is that what that is, okay?
Yeah.
But you're going to call on that one unless we decide not to do it?
No, I'm gonna.
All right.
Well, my suggestion would be, and I think we essentially by consensus have already agreed that the people that we're going to reach out to are ones that we're open, open to supporting if we actually get.
Yeah, they impact us.
We don't, you know, it's, it would be presumptuous for us to debate them before they've actually given us a request. Hopefully, we haven't lost them. More Free Library always increases by a small amount, which I think is based on activity from the town, or based, library guards. It's gone up to three hundred from two eighty fifty. Anyone opposed to that?
No.
Project Feed the Thousand, like we say, used to be a hundred dollars, which would be targeted towards Townsend Food Shelf, but we have not gotten a request from them now that they're part of a larger organization. It hasn't happened for a couple of years. Though I would strongly encourage people, as an aside, to donate to the Townsend Food Shelf separately.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's.
Senior Solutions increased their request this year from five hundred to six fifty. Which.
I mean, it's looked at, we're an aging population.
Clearness, just to them, we should all review their letter to see.
Would it be, have you in the past given an appropriation to somebody at an old rate, or is it what they asked for or nothing?
No, we go to the old.
We've sometimes given them less than what they asked for, yes.
That's what they're asking. What we decide to give is.
Exactly, yeah.
What we think we can afford.
Absolutely, we've done that.
Yeah, we gage down with all the numbers and we see what we say.
And also how much you didn't ask our town.
Yeah. I will, well, I'll pass this around. There's nothing that jumps out at me from the cover letter that explains why they would have increased it, which, I'll be honest, is something I would somewhat expect an organization to do since they know, they know it's increased. They would maybe throw a bit of information on why it might be increasing, just to help people justify it. There doesn't seem to be anything on the cover letter.
Well, I mean, I am a senior, but I still think because we, we, we are a generous town. I think for, for the amount of people that we have here, I think that we should at least stay and do the five hundred that we did, have always done before. You know, I'm not sure we can increase every, every year. We can't really increase the amount.
That's twenty percent, isn't it?
So my opinion is it should stay the same as what it was last year. That's my opinion.
Do we get to put in, don't we, wouldn't we just put it in as they've asked, though? And then that we can go on at that?
The town, you folks decide what you want to present to the voters.
Okay, and then the town just says yea or nay. They can't amend it and say we'd rather have it be five hundred.
No, they can.
They can.
They can.
Okay, so wouldn't it make sense to put forward what the organization asked for? So it's a clear indication of what.
It's because the town, when you're in town meeting, they don't go line by line, they just vote the total.
The whole order.
Well, this actually, last two years I've been there, since I, we have gone line by line, it's been a little tedious, actually. Remember, it always stands up and says, this is why I feel like Grace Cottage is important. So I'm just kind of curious if it just makes sense to reflect that there was an increase to ask, I don't know.
Well, but by the same token, and I speak a little out of term, but the Select Board is the determining factor of the what money the town should spend.
Yeah.
And if they feel that five hundred is an appropriate amount, then that's fine. If at the meeting someone says, I want to bump it up, then they can ask for that and then vote on it. But right now, the town, I decide what they can afford.
Because one year we had somebody come in here and specifically ask for an increase and the whole members decided no.
That was very special.
And it was brought up again, and it was brought up at town meeting.
Yeah, it was.
And they decided no also. So it, it's kind of hard to know what to do.
Yeah, no, that's why I was just curious if it makes sense to just put it in as it's actually requested, knowing that this can all be tweaked at town meeting and it seems like it does kind of get discussed? Or do you feel strongly about this one that we want to take it down? That's why I was just kind of curious.
Well, it's an increase of fifteen percent and that's, that seems to be a substantial increase.
Yeah.
What does Senior Solutions stand for? What is their?
Well, they do a lot of things around the town, you know, it's senior citizens, it's an aging community, if you read the letter.
Shelby, Shelby.
They do a lot of things.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would also say as an appropriation for our community, it's a fairly, it's on the higher end already at five hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I would also lean towards saying it should, I would prefer it to stay at the five hundred that's been approved previously.
That worked for me, I was just curious the, the how.
No, I mean, I think, I think we generally take the approach, though, that there's some amount of filter that we're doing.
Yeah.
This is.
Like we said, there, there, there are organizations that, that request considerably more money than we would ever.
Appropriate.
Appropriate, and we don't necessarily pass all that on because, because it then sets up essentially articles that we already know we're all going to argue should be amended.
Yeah, and I'm, I mean, I'm just curious, that's the term that he's high. I was just curious about how we go about, yeah, if we.
And I don't, yeah, I, I agree, I don't necessarily know that it's, I could see an argument for doing it differently, but, yeah. Okay, so everyone basically in agreement that you'll keep it at five hundred is our.
In the light that they gave, no reason for increase.
SEVCA, we're going to reach out to, see what's going on with that. Association for the Blind requested again one hundred dollars as they have in recent years. Any opposition to the question?
That one I would question, do we, do we have someone in our population that benefits from that?
Yeah, social for nearsight.
That is, they may call that out in the letter, I'm not sure.
Not that I want to be like, hey, can you tell us about your disability? But like, I'm just kind of curious if we actually, if there's actually someone in our demographic that's benefiting.
And, you know, there's also a number of people that go out to tell people what their personal problems are. The Association for the Blind, I, I find is a, I find a really horrible situation.
Well, and I, I guess I would also, you know, I mean, with, with that organization and maybe with others, I also feel like part of the support of these organizations is for when someone in the community may. That organization, though, it may never have. support of these organizations is for when someone in the community may, that organization vote, it may never have ended up until now.
Yeah.
So. And also hoping to just support the organizations continue to be viable for once someone needs them. Any, have you found their letter, or did you?
Yeah, no, it's really general. There's, but.
Did they, yeah, does it really say anything?
No, it tells you how many, like, clients and students they have across Wyndham County.
Okay.
And then it points out that the baby, the baby room or generations aging, and then they might see it increased.
That's enough for that.
So, I think your point that we could have someone who needs it makes sense.
That's enough for that. What are the, the generation?
Okay, so is everybody then in agreement on keeping the hundred for, okay. Uh, Valley Cares, uh, eight twenty-one, which is the same amount as the last several years.
It's an odd number.
What's that?
It's an odd number.
Yeah.
It is, and I don't have their letter, I, I'm assuming it's based on something.
It's based on.
Per capita, based on the community, based on, it's, 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 yeah.
Is that what's, okay. I personally, having known a number of people who've either been there or are there, think it's a pretty great place and want to continue to be supportive of it, unless.
It's a lot of people who sound like it.
Other people feel differently?
There's a fair amount of people that love her from this town.
Yeah.
Yes, there are.
Out of everything on here.
And like, we're there.
Out of everything that's on here, they're probably one of the most, they're probably the most important.
Yeah, and out of all the letters, they have the clearest picture of like how much money they're investing back in our community for us, for our pretty.
Yeah.
They said that free care and services for private Brooklyn residents in two thousand and nineteen is estimated at eighty thousand dollars. So, like, that's pretty handsome of you.
Yeah.
That's not bad.
Um, okay, so then we'll keep promoting that. Uh, Vermont Center for Independent Living, like you said, wasn't originally on the spreadsheet, but we do have a letter from them requesting eighty dollars again, which is the amount they've requested for the last several years.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
I think it's something we should support.
I think that ties in with Valley Cares also.
Right. Uh, Visiting Nurse Alliance.
That's an important one.
At a thousand dollars, um, which is the same amount that we've, uh, that the town has approved for several years in a row. It's obviously the largest of any of the individual appropriations. Uh, does anyone have any concerns about that?
No, I think they're a good organization.
I think they are also.
Thank you all.
Everyone comfortable with that?
Yes.
Alright. Uh, West River Water Shuttle Line, so I guess is now Southeastern Water Shuttle Line.
We didn't hear from Gloria.
Uh, no, that, no, we got that. That.
This is two lines, so we'll.
Yeah, the line break is a little.
Yeah, okay, I'll attend, right.
Yeah, also, I'm not sure Gloria's still doing a lot.
Uh, she's with them, but she's not the president.
She's not, yeah, she's scaled down some of the stuff, but.
So what exactly do they do? I forgot.
They monitor the water systems during the summer, they do a lot of, uh, cleanups, they, you know, they, they, they're a watchdog for our river.
Do a lot of testing for a lot of water.
Okay.
Yeah. I think, I, I also think they're a very good organization.
Yeah.
And we've, you know, the community has supported them at that level for several years, anyway. Anyone have any issues with that again? Okay. Um, Humane Society, I will reach out to tomorrow and find out about that. When the Women's Freedom Center, uh, increased their appropriation request from five hundred to six fifty. It had been at five hundred for the last couple of years, anyway. Um, I haven't looked at their letter, but it should be in there.
Yeah, it's right here. Do you wanna see it?
Glenn, just curious if they, if.
Do they tie into all with the Groundworks?
No, they don't. They're separate. Yeah, just like Winston Proudie's separate than a lot of the other.
But they're part of that, no, separate.
No, they're completely separate, yeah. They have some similar services, but the Women's Freedom Center, like, so if you're homeless and you, like, need emergency housing, there's general funding, um, based on income and a whole bunch of things through Groundworks, but if you are also a victim of domestic abuse, you can get additional housing beds free from, um, having to cohabitate with the opposite sex or gender, like, if you're going through trauma, you know, we said that they have separate beds, um, in different places, um, and they provide more trauma-related response to like domestic abuse.
Alright, so they're, so they're.
Yeah, so they do have like a niche, so they work hand in hand, and a lot of times you'll see people cross back and forth between the two to make, to help get through a hard time, but they have very specific, a, a specific focus that's not met somewhere else, but I'm not so sure about the increase for us.
Um, and maybe we're correct trying to do this.
As much as I appreciate what you're saying.
I mean, we're reluctant to increase our own budget, and we try so hard to keep our own budget level funded, I I'm a little wary of, of, uh, increasing our, our appropriations just if they're.
Well, we.
Well, give us a change, and we give up the other one, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, we seem to.
Gloria, if you're visiting it after all the numbers are, and then we can change as well.
I mean, there's no doubt that every one of these organizations are important, but there's only so much we can do.
And we can list twenty more that we don't get asked about, which also would be great, but I mean, for this one, I have the same feeling, kind of, about that we went over the other one, that maybe
Yeah, right, right. Right.
if you get five hundred and repropose me to the town about, and then.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is everyone in agreement with that?
I think it's amazing service, and I, they listed like three individuals from Brookline that they say, um, there's, that are in their overall number of people they support, which is amazing, but I'm sure, you know, five hundred dollars is still, I think, really, that's one of our more generous ones, anyway, so.
Yeah, so five hundred.
Okay, everyone's true. Uh, and then Youth Services, uh, where the request is two fifty-five, which is the same
Yeah.
amount that they've requested in recent years. Um, anyone in opposition to support?
Uh, use the two more.
I'm just, we are an aging population, though, so maybe we should.
Yeah.
Maybe it is now.
Yes, but the more of our kids that keep out of jail, the more we have younger people active in the population.
There should be a number, so we should, uh, Senior Solutions go up and.
Let's see, the numbers.
If you're aging.
Okay, so then the, um.
He's beautiful.
Two additional appropriations to discuss. One is a new appropriation for Winston Proudie, um, which should be in there for, for two hundred and fifty dollars.
And then was this Roadline, the Southern Vermont Therapeutic?
Well, yeah, so we should discuss that. So we got, we received a request from Southern Vermont, I'm, yeah, I'm not sure why I didn't have it on there. Southern Vermont Therapeutic Riding Center.
There is one.
Or, I'm not sure what the amount is.
Five hundred.
Yeah, five hundred.
Yeah.
Okay.
What I will say, and I don't think that this would probably have changed, is we were not aware of any real connection that they have specifically to Brookline, or, um, clientele from Brookline. They submitted a request last year, which we did not support and did not include in appropriations.
I mean, in my past life work, I can tell you more individuals, more youth in your community than you would expect are using this as an alternative means to traditional therapy, um, that's not covered by insurance. So, these donations help them offset, they actually give discounted rates, like, if you're doing it for, I mean, pretty much anyone who has, um, certain mental health issues or developmentally disabilities who can't traditionally access therapy, this is something that a lot of the kids use, and, um, they can't get it. It doesn't, nothing pays for it. The parents have to pay for it out of pocket, um, but, but it's discounted in order for, like, meet them partway. Um, I actually think they're great. I think five hundred is a lot, because I don't think that there's probably that many. There's definitely people in the community using it, probably not like a ton, because we're not a huge community, we're a pre-holded community, but I, I think that I would mind putting a little, so you'd like, giving the town an opportunity to vote on a much smaller number than five hundred dollars, but putting it forward, because I, I do think that there's probably more people than you would expect that have been impacted by the benefit of this kind of therapeutic service.
Right, that organization specifically.
By this, exactly. Yeah, they're the only one that does it. In Wyndham County, there, there's been a place on and off in Putney, but, um, this is like the main one who does that. There's another one that does adaptive horse track riding, but this is like one of the two. Um, and I think she's the bigger organization, so she tends to be more, like, people get it quicker. So I don't know, that's just my, from my lens of.
Was that the organization that was originally over at West River Stables, uh, Mercedes, uh, Stables?
I don't think so, I don't know. I wouldn't know that far back. I, I've only interacted with this organization the last few years.
I think there was, they might have been there, yeah, years ago.
But I don't know, I actually think it's really cool, um, and I think that, like, there's just so many more people than you would expect, and they're usually a really unseen population who can't, that actually do benefit from this sort of thing, but it is very expensive, and the farms have to already make these discounts just to get people to be able to afford to access something that insurance won't cover. Um, and so, I think, I don't think five hundred dollars for the size of our community, but I, I wouldn't mind putting an allocation on there for some.
Five hundred dollars, I think.
Yeah, and the town can still completely say, hey, no, never mind, but.
The way it would work also, like, with any new appropriation, it would be more separate, as, as an, as an article outside of it.
Oh, right.
It'd be individually. Cause I think five, I think five hundred dollars is a steep ask for something that
Yeah.
doesn't have like a, you know, it's not gonna be everyone. It is a small, people with developmentally disabilities are, it's a really small population, so it's not like it's gonna be, you know, all of our neighbors, but like, I think that it's for.
How do, uh, how do, how do people feel about that?
I feel like a hundred, a hundred fifty, put Winston Proudie and this other one as a separate article, and let the people make a decision.
I think we could, oh, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, the number, yeah, if you do it that way, then you.
It's good to give, but, you know, you gotta be careful, because we're not a very rich town, but by the same token, we're grateful that we have what we have.
So you wanna do is a separate article.
Well, it has to be, it has to be, because the benefit of that is then people are voting up or down specifically on that appropriation.
It has to be, it has to be.
Well, it's not.
It's not packaged in.
Well, we do it on our responsibility by not rejecting it outright and just saying, we're not gonna tell them, so, yeah, let's do it that way.
And then if my perspective isn't, you know, if the population shows up at the meeting, or, isn't a population that's been impacted by it, then we just say, we just say no.
Yeah, right. Right, exactly.
Well, it's, it's the children, it's all in front of the children.
Well, they can be for anyone, but, yeah, a lot of, a lot of autism's rising at like a humongous rate with the reference, I can't.
But basically, it's children.
Joseph, what were you gonna say, man?
I, I do think compared to just about every other, uh, service organization on here, it's a relatively, uh, niche, and I, I don't wanna use the word, uh, exclusive organi- organization, but it's already a small number, right, that would, developmentally challenged children in the community.
Yeah.
It's a relatively small number. It's already targeting, you know, that, the, a small part of our community, because we are relatively older community and a smaller community, but it's exclusive in the sense that it's also, it's, it's riding horses, you know, I mean, how many of those people wanna ride horses anyways? It's, it's just so specific. I feel, I feel very comfortable giving, you know, to Senior Solutions or, um, you know, even SEFCO, uh, because they're wide-reaching. You know, it's a lot, it's a lot broader. Youth Services, it's, it's very broad, it's just, you know, youth services. This is just kids who, it would make them, and granted, I, I do not, I'm not trying to denigrate what they do and how much it helps certain people, but it's, it's just people that would get a therapeutic benefit from riding horses, and.
Which is probably, to be honest, more people than you think.
It, it very well may be, but, you know, the Women's Freedom Center, great, it's, it's, it's to help, you know, women, right? It's not the Women's Therapeutic Horse Riding Freedom Center.
No, yeah, but I would say that the Women's Freedom Center said that they've helped, they helped three people from Brookline. I mean, I don't think that it would be unrealistic to think that there's been three people in our Brooklyn population that could benefit from this. I mean, three kids who would benefit between behavioral, socio-emotional, developmental, and mental health issues.
You, you, you could, you could be right, but I, I, um, my personal opinion, aside from what I've said, it being relatively specific, my personal opinion is also that, uh, it's, it's not something that, uh, insurance helps with. And so, yeah, clearly, our money is gonna help them keep their prices low, but it's already something that the parents or somebody is going out of their way to, to put, enroll their child in this, and, and, and they have to be paying a lot out of their pocket already for it, and so, I, I just feel like it's something that's, uh, um, in my opinion, it's a little too specific. It's a, it's not broad enough to warn.
So you don't wanna put it on as that separate appropriation, I mean, that the town can decide for themselves whether or not.
You have to, I.
I think.
Well, no, we don't have, we don't have, that's, that's what we're discussing, we don't have.
Well, I don't ask.
You have to, right, yeah.
And here's the other thing, I'll say, and I don't, I, I, I wanna be a little conscious of the fact that it's late.
Yeah.
We're, either way, whether we put it as part of the, warn it as a separate part of an article or not, is something that we need to, we're gonna have to debate as part of the overall warning, so I don't think we have to resolve this part of it tonight.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
Because ultimately, it probably is something that we're gonna end up just needing to vote on, and we also don't want to do that tonight, because we're not
Yeah.
voting on it tonight.
We're not, yeah.
But I think it's, I think it's good, we should give it, we should give consideration to that and Winston Proudie one, and see how people feel, and, and we'll, we will vote on it ultimately as part of the article that we warn. But otherwise, as far as the sort of rolled up appropriations, um, we've got agreement on everything, and then hopefully by next meeting, we can have clarity about the missing ones, as to whether those are things we need to factor in or not. And then we can finalize that bucket of them.
Oh, alright, next meeting is the eighteenth, or, yeah.
The eighteenth, yeah, because I think what we should be looking at is, and, and I see no reason that we won't hit this, is that the first meeting in January on the eighth, my intention is to have most of the articles. Ready for most of the bulk standard articles ready to look at. Um, we really are gonna need to finalize and vote on that article, probably at that meeting. Uh, because we get, yeah, because we get a little too dicey.
January eighth. Well, we could look at the agenda.
So the thing we'll wanna keep in mind, not that this is really on, well, kind of, the other thing, and we'll talk about it the eighteenth, is we also need to nail down anything else. At least get it close enough that we'll be able to talk through it and figure out the wording at that January eighth meeting for any of the other articles that we're gonna do, like the road equipment, uh, and stuff like that, which we'll talk more about next week, and hopefully you can then frame all that before we get to date. Alright, um, I think that's good. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn? So, we just move to adjourn, is there a second?
Second, Joseph.
Second by Joseph. Um, all those in favor of adjourning signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? We are adjourned at nine P M on the dot.